Ten thirty, let's go ahead and get rolling. Welcome to this special call meeting of the Temple City Council for March 5th, 2021. Currently it is ten thirty. Let's just dive right into the agenda. First item on the agenda is to receive a second reading of public hearing, to receive municipal court service, municipal service plan, and contact and conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the possible annexation of twenty-three point nine one seven plus or minus acres of land situated in the Maximal Moreno Survey, abstract number fourteen, Belle County, Texas, being a section of Old ninety-five ride of way, missing approximately four thousand two north of its intersection with FM ninety-three, and extending approximately two point zero one plus or minus miles south of its intersection.
All right, good morning, Mayor and Council. And of course, you only have to read that one more time, first reading for the ordinance, unless you wanted to hear it again, second reading. So glad to be here with you for the second public hearing for this annexation request. Of course, the first one was last night. And so this is just for the ride of way, the old highway ninety-five. It's approximately twenty-something acres total, I think twenty-three acres. And it's located about forty-two hundred feet to the north of FM ninety-three, and would extend just over two miles to the south along FM ninety-three. And so this was a request by Belle County. And this would also enable future annexations, including one that has been requested already. And that's for the Daniel tract that you see on the map here, that is two hundred and twenty-nine acres for future development. So no private property is involved in this request at all. And so this is just a reminder about the schedule. And so this may seem like deja vu, because it kind of is. We're subject to the old annexation rules for ride-of-way annexation, and thus, all the different public hearings that you don't see for the current request typically. But the petition was approved by you all on January twenty-first. And then after today, after the second public hearing, we'll have a first and second reading in April, at the April first and April fifteenth city council meetings for the ordinance. And so no capital improvements are proposed by the city at this time. You know, but with annexation, ultimately, we would be responsible for maintenance of that highway. And the service plan was circulated to all relevant departments, and there were no issues. And that's, that's all I've got. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Council, any questions for Mr. Chandler?
They were all answered last night.
First and second reading in less than twenty-four hours.
Yeah, that's right.
Kind of knocks it out, doesn't it? Okay, then at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please raise your hand on the Zoom system if you would like to speak. Then, all right. Then, there being none, I will close this, this public hearing, and entertain a motion on item number one, if there's no further discussion with the council.
I'll make a motion to approve item one.
Accept that motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Walker, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Morales. Council, if you would, please cast your vote. Item number one passes five votes to zero. Thank y'all for that. Moving on to item number two is a discussion regarding the board and commission's application review and interview process, appointments, and work plans.
Mayor, staff would suggest we actually move into your work session room, because this is more of kind of a work session item. So if we could maybe recess and then head that way, I would think that would make a more, be more conducive to a good conversation.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Look at you, you figured it out. Good job.
Yeah, but kicked off everybody that wasn't.
Don't get that wrong. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay. Wait. All right, so to continue the, I guess, to begin the conversation started over, let's go ahead and jump in. I took some time looking at the boards and commissions. Quite impressive, and all the applications and the color coding. It's about three hundred hours worth of ink.
Probably about three hundred hours worth of work for Jana. She did, I think, a great job getting this organized. Mayor, I would, I would probably suggest, if you don't mind, letting Jana just kind of go through what she, what, how she structured it, and I think that would be helpful. She's also given a copy of the current board and commission's policy. We have printed out members, current members that are serving on more than two boards right now. I'll write a little cheat sheet for you. And then, as we talk about potentially scheduling interviews, staff has taken a stab, just, just to give us something to work with, to start thinking about how we might schedule these interviews and when we might schedule them. So I've got a worksheet that we can mark, completely mark out, but just something for us to work with, to start with. So I'll let, if you don't mind, let Jana kind of walk us through this spreadsheet.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I just want to, just the best I can, just briefly go over this spreadsheet and sort of what was kind of floating around in my head to make this as simple as possible. So to start off with, we received a hundred and sixty-two applications, which I thought was phenomenal. I think if you'll remember back to last time we talked, we had ninety-one that you can see. So I'm really, I'm really impressed of the number of applications that we received. And I think we had thirty-nine of those applications for current board members who requested to be reappointed, you know, to their, their current, current board that they sit on. And so of course, hindsight's always twenty-twenty, and this was first, you know, go around for us. And hopefully, we never have to do this again. But if we do ever, I'll know next time where we, you know, can improve things. So we submitted the applicant, or we put the application online. So when an applicant went in and filled out their original application, of course, they selected the top board or commission of their choice. So that showed up at the top of the application. They answered the questions, you know, accordingly. And then about three quarters of the way down, we asked them to select any of their board commissions they were interested in. I was not expecting this. I never really imagined it in my wildest dreams. But I would say probably fifty percent or more selected every single board. So on the application, they're in alphabetical order, and that's the way they defaulted. So there was no place to put, you know, pick your top two or top three. So having said that, I think we're going to restructure the new application, where they can only pick, you know, three, and then, you know, and let them put them in the choi, in the order of, you know, what their top priority are. So.
Jana, what if the person, an applicant, is willing to serve on any board that has enough?
They are. And I assumed that was probably the case on some of them. So, you know, I don't want to slide anybody that took the, took the time to fill out an application. So I didn't want to assume that they just selected every board. So what I felt obligated to do was go and put their name on every single spot that they applied for. So what I've been doing is going through every application, and, you know, putting their name in every single board commission that they wanted, and then filling in the criteria for you, so that you would know, you know, they, they're not eligible for this board, and they don't meet any of the criteria, or they do, they live in this district, and this is their profession, and they do live in a neighborhood planning district, and this is what it is. So I tried to simplify it as much as I could on this spreadsheet. So obviously, we talked about the colored chart, but you can see everything in yellow are the current members who want to be reappointed. And green is the standing member. Red are pending applications that I have for current board members who did not submit an application to be reappointed. I've reached out to all of them. We only have four, so it's not, you know, a large number, but I have reached out to them. The mustard color is new applications. And the ones that are in gold are the ones that I, that I knew for a fact that that was their top choice, because that's their original application that they submitted. The sort of light pink color are the current board members who did not submit an application to remain on that board. We didn't have anyone, I think just one, that wanted to step down completely, but they just wanted to be on a different board commission. They wanted to try their hat at something new. And then, of course, the turquoise are the vacancies. So really, what we need to decide today is, I would think that we would want to start with the current board and commission members that are eligible to serve again, who have requested to remain on that board. Do we just want to check them off? Do you want to interview them? Do you want to sort of eliminate that process, because we have so many other applicants to interview? That would be my first, my first go around, try to look at this to see, you know, how many vacancies do we actually have? And then I would suggest we look at the applications that are below, that it was their top choice. That's what they were most interested in, and do they fit the criteria? And then sort of go from there. That's what I envisioned in my, that these will lead to, you know. You have any other ideas or any other suggestions? I've opened up and looking at this spreadsheet for weeks, and so, you know, I'm welcome to any other ideas.
On the, kind of, this worksheet for interviews. So I, I took the work that Jana did and just tried to think about what could potentially be a schedule for interviews. So I looked at the number of appointments that you have to make to the boards. So, you know, the boards that were existing boards, not all of the positions are up for reappointment at this time. Some of them have current terms that, you know, are ongoing. So the number of appointments that need to be made right now to each of those boards, which is the appointment column on this spreadsheet. So, for example, the Main Street Advisory Board, you have, you will be making a total of eleven appointments, eleven of those terms. That's probably not a great one, because that's a brand-new board, so all of them are vacant. But let's, let's take a look at Building and Standards as an example. So there's nine total appointments that need to be made to that board. And seven of them have no income yet. So seven of them, you're, you're starting, they're, they're completely vacant. So I tried to look at the number of people that you need to appoint, and assume that that would, that would correlate to the number of people that you interview, although that's completely your choice, so. But I, I assumed that the more appointments that you had to make to that board, the more interviews you would be doing. So I tried to organize where you did maybe one board a day for the boards that have several appointments to make, and then some of the ones where you only have two or three, group some of those together on days. And I tried to spread it out between some of them starting, some of them being afternoons, and some of them being mornings. But it, unfortunately, you know, if, if you're going to do, you're going to be spending a lot of time interviewing people, I think, one way or the other. There's a lot of dates on here. And I just, I, again, I, we don't know your schedule, if these dates will work for you. I just wanted to put something on paper to show what we could, you know, what an option was. And this would, this would get you to the point where you would be able to perhaps make appointments the last meeting in March. I don't think we're going to be, I, I really don't think there's any way that you're going to be ready to make appointments two weeks from now, just with the number of interviews you have to do. The terms do start on April first, so if we could get to a point where you've done all your interviews this month and can appoint in a special meeting the last week of March, that would be ideal. But you also don't have to do that, but that's just, that would be ideal. And again, we've got the policy on here for you. Jana has all of the applications available digitally that we can pull up, if you want to look at the applicants in more detail. And so that's, that is the staff work we've done to get us here. And so now, now you guys get to have some fun.
I think you've done such a great job that you should do all the interviews too. Not help.
No comment.
Land board.
That's okay. We all knew this was, you know, going to be time-consuming, going to be a heavy lift. You know, this first time around. You know, as, as we go forward, it won't be yearly speaking interviews. So this is the hardest one.
And everybody is doing all the interviews.
No, one thing, one thing we talked about is that we have at least three council members at each interview. We have a quorum, right, at, at each interview. So, you know, if someone has, obviously, something on their schedule that just can't break, well, then you saw it in the interviews that day, and the rest of us pick up the slack. So, you know, we'll, we'll all probably have that kind of issue at some point, so.
I do want to note, just because you guys have never done interviews before, just to make you aware, that interviews are in open session, unless it's a quasi-judicial board, and there's just a few of those. So you will also need to decide for the boards that you have the option to do an executive session, if you want to do that. So that would be like naming and zoning, Building and Standards Commission, and maybe DVA, although that one's on the bubble, because while they do have some quasi-judicial elements, most of what they do is advisory in nature. So it may be, you know, you may just want to do all of, be consistent with how you do all of them, since you don't have very many that you even have that option. But I did want to say that that was, that was an option for the quasi-judicial boards.
Okay. All right, well, let's just, um, let's just dive in. Let's work off of this sheet. So let's, let's discuss the Main Street first. This is one of the new ones, obviously, so we have eleven appointments.
In the interviews, what particular board, what are the standard questions we ask all of them?
And that would be our recommendation. I do actually have some questions drafted for your consideration. I forgot to print those, but I can certainly, maybe during our first break, I can certainly do that. So maybe that's the last, last thing we do today, is look over those questions. And, but yes, I would, I would recommend you have a standard set of questions. You, you might have one for, if you, if you choose to interview stand, existing board members, you may have a, maybe slightly, a slight variation on a, on an existing board member versus a new one. But, and, and also keep in mind that these interviews, you're going to need to be fairly brief. Because even, even with all of these days, you're still only talking about fifteen, twenty-minute sessions. So, you know, two or three questions probably. And, and there's also very, you know, in, in the application, we did ask some basic questions about, you know, why they wanted to serve on the board, and, and the time commitment and things. So reading their written response, reading the applicant's written responses to those questions could probably help make the interviews go faster. Yeah, so.
I know this will be more for the city secretary's office, but would it be beneficial to the process to have the applicant fill out? I mean, if we're going to have sort of these standardized questions, would it be beneficial to have the applicant fill those out, that we already have a copy of those at interview time?
So my, my opinion, generally, an oral interview, which is what you're talking about here, would not be, your, your written set of questions is what you've collected on the application. And you've asked, you know, for or by, the, the oral interview, I've, I've ne, doesn't mean you can't do it. I've never seen an interview process where you bring someone in for an oral, oral interview, having them have pre-answered your questions in writing.
All right. Okay, so on the Main Street Advisory Board, we, like we said earlier, we have eleven appointments to make. You can see on the Main Street Advisory, business owners in districts, architect, engineer, community leader, et cetera. So.
And one question, one question, I'm sorry to interrupt you about this, but after each name, Jana, that you list number of applications, does that mean the number that they've, they, like, just pick a number two, they've applied for two different boards?
Yes.
Okay, not, not that they've applied for that board twice?
Correct. That, that means they have that many applications.
Okay, right. I thought that's what you meant.
So are we just going to throw names out, following need? Like, business owner of the district, Jacob Bates, seems like natural fit.
Is he here on something else now?
It only says one application.
So that means that he's not, yeah, sure.
I don't think he's.
Yeah, he isn't yet. Christine Parks is a property owner as well as a possible educational representative. Whether she's with TIS, or anybody who doesn't know, she's, she's great.
One thing I might suggest that you do is go, go through, especially these that have some place near some specific places, and maybe just go from top to bottom and say who, who you want to request or invite for a interview for that position, and just go down the list.
So we need, we have, looks like two business owners, and then right after that is two property owners. So is, yes, it's listed there.
The ones in gold are the ones who.
Better what?
Your first choice.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So if you have two business owner positions to fill, how many would be, how many applicants would you desire to interview in order to make the choice of filling those two?
I would think at least three.
Do you have three people in the golden color that are listed as business owners that you would like to interview? I mean, Joe Shepherd needs to be interviewed. Moses Flores. Ashley Vernon. Ashley is getting, she's starting up a new business on Seventh Street. Is Brian still in? Yeah, I think it's called Fox Dog, and it makes it MRB, it's a copy, I think it's at a street. Yeah, so she's, she's trying to get on the beat and probably like to get involved. Okay, so I have Jacob Bates, Joe Shepherd, Ashley Vernon, and Moses Flores. Oh, and Patrick.
As business owners. Correct.
Yeah, we may be able to shuffle some people to make it.
Who's the fourth name?
Patrick. Nice. All right, what about for a property owner? You need two of those. Okay, I don't think I said, she has a castle house on Ninth Street, Ninth and French, and is very involved with the city of Austin, but would like to become more involved here.
What's her name?
Kay, Gita. But she reached out specifically to introduce herself. I know Meg Petrica, she's also a retired educator. She may be able to fill that educational slot.
Is Meg also a property owner?
She is.
That's what I thought. She's so involved with the symphony. I mean, she's a really important choice.
Is she in Main Street District then? Is she a property owner in the Main Street District?
Nope.
Yeah, so she would have, she could be an educational representative, but she wouldn't fit your, your property owner slot. Is, is. Kay's not either, then, because I don't know why I was thinking.
Todd Gibson's in the district.
Yeah, yeah, same with Kay. I'm not a property owner, sorry. I'm going to give up the interview here. Kay, and I think Kay indicated on her application that she runs.
Guda?
Two more. Kay, Guda, G U A D. Of course, you know, and I think you guys have already mentioned this, but you, the five people that you have indicated you want to interview for the business owner, all of them would also qualify as a property owner, I believe. I think they all, I know Joe owns property, Ashley does, I believe. Mr. Flores does. I, I'm not sure the ownership structure of Jake, that has any ownership in actual property. So he, he might need to be the business owner, but Patrick owns property. Do we have anyone that fits the architect, engineer, five, well, David, Patrick?
Willby McKenzie?
Kelly is. Kelly Garcia is the owner of the park. Who's what? That's the Kelly Garcia.
Yes, yes.
Larry Neil.
Yep.
I'm actually behind now.
And she's the part of his, she bought him his.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Wow.
What's her name?
For her.
Kelly Garcia.
Yeah, and her husband's a second insurer.
Yeah.
His husband's what?
Bill Stokes' daughter.
Second insurer in the PA.
I just thought she had, had the company partner, not she.
So she could be architect or business owner?
Yes.
Within the Main Street.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Chamber of Commerce, rods up.
Yeah.
That's an easy one. He's the only one that has chambers.
We have a K C people.
We don't even have to interview him. Right.
One down.
Yeah. Except for architect or engineer, I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep up with all. Are you, who are, who are you guys wanting to interview for that one?
Kelly.
Big Kelly.
Anybody else?
But not David?
Okay, and then also McKinney will be architecture.
She may know McKinsey, I don't.
Just remind you that are the reasons you're doing an interview. You don't, if you don't know, then you get a chance to.
That's all I have. So you really have three to thank.
So you, you all would like to interview McKenzie, Willby, and David, Patrick, and Kelly Garcia?
I would think so. Are we missing anybody that is, that is, or protecting, bringing in? Some of these don't say what they're doing. We're just trying to go by memory here.
Also, EDC and Harzy, I don't see anyone listed on those. Do y'all?
No, I don't.
This will be a stretch, but if, I know David, Patrick. This will be a stretch, but if, I know David Patrick is not on the RZ, but he's very familiar with the RZ.
But we have to wait until we appoint the RZ members, and then the city appoint a representative or from RZ, how we do on the airport? You know, that's right, or...
Yeah, oh no, I was just thinking about familiarity.
Well, familiarity, David is...
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not...
So, Realtor, banker. Do you have any? They have Jeremy Jurassic. Bryant Ward. Anna Morris. And Bryant Ward.
Oh, Bryant, yeah.
I thought Bryant was a banker.
Realtor.
Since when?
Looks for keep, keeping it realty.
When did he leave Dexter Co?
A little while.
A little while. Well, I'm out of it.
Do you guys have a community, you have a community leader spot? Do you have anyone you want to interview for the community leader spots?
About Charlie Ayers?
Anyone else? Joe?
Joe?
Anybody else? What about education?
Well, Susan Chandler from the Children's Museum, certainly. That is the Susan Chandler at Children's Museum, isn't it? Or should I check? Oh, wrong museum, sorry. Wrong Susan, wrong museum.
Well, I don't, I, I don't know. We can pull up her application and see. Because Susan Chandler is, there is a Susan Chandler associated with the Children's Museum who is married to Bryant Chandler, but there's also a Susan Chandler who runs the children's...
I think this is...
Oh, she's a checker.
Okay.
Not, not, not our Susan Chandler, so to speak. Looks like for education, Christine Harps or Meg Petruca.
Or Lois Ryder. Lois lives out in the county. Does that matter?
None. None on this board, Mr.? And who, and who is that mayor?
Lois Ryder, so, first page.
They have that... Do you have any idea why Lois is interested in this?
That Academy Museum, is that what you mean?
Susan Chandler. You've got her eyes on you. You want to interview now?
I don't think so.
Oh, the Academy Music, yeah, that's one. Founding member of the Temple Symphony.
And then, did you want to interview, I mean, so, skipping over the RZ and EDC for a second, for the Realtor or broker or banker? For Realtor, also Anna Morris.
Yeah, and Mona Formers, retired Realtor.
Anna Morris is a carload couple. That's her daughter. Anna just moved back. She taught my kids swim lessons when I was little. Anybody else you want to interview for the Realtor or banker position, broker position? Do you have Bryant?
Oh, there's... No, I haven't heard of her.
Anybody else?
Does it mean it's tied on Brad?
I have, I, I wrote it down.
He's got five apps in. Apparently, it's on P and Z, Brad.
He is.
Right.
So, I'm gonna read to you who I wrote down for interviews. If you please listen for completeness, and let me know if I missed anybody. Joe Shepherd, Ashley Vernon, Moses Flores, Jacob Bates, Patrick Dion, Kay. You know? Kelly Garcia, David Patrick. Kelly Garcia, I was definitely wrote her down twice, I think. I meant somebody else. Kelly Garcia, David Patrick. Who was the other?
The broad.
Uh, McKenzie, I meant McKenzie. Willby, sorry. Apologies. Okay, so Kelly Garcia, David Patrick, McKenzie, with, McKenzie, Willby, Charlie Ayers, Christine Harps, Meg Petruca, Lois Ryder, and Anna Morris and Bryant Ward. And Ashley Vernon? I do have her, yes.
Did you say it?
I really, I couldn't commit. Unless you want me to rework, re revise that and see.
Did you say Patrick Dylan?
I did, yes. I do have him down. So, so this will, this list will be who we contact to schedule interviews with for this board. Is that correct? You good with that?
Please. Did you put in Jeremy Jurassic?
I did not. You want to add him?
Only, you know, a pretty wide real estate experience. I'm not advocating more, more interviews, though.
So, you're, you get, this would be sixteen interviews for eleven slots. But you do not have anybody right now for the RZ or the EDC, so that, I think, you know, maybe perhaps Mayor, you would like to reach out. So, there's, there's nobody that would meet those qualifications on, on your interview list. So, you, so you'll be interviewing sixteen people for really eight spots, because you also have assumed that Rob would be appointed to represent the children and not interview him.
Right.
So, you've got about two applicants per slot, not necessarily... You know, some people could fit multiple slots.
So, obviously, the deadline has passed for applications, and we don't have an RZ or an EDC spot for this. So, does that just keep you off the application?
That would be...
I mean, is that, I, I'm assuming that's closed on the website.
Actually, we're seeing an application this morning, but we go live Monday with on favor of Google or to commission any applications. So, it's essentially the same application, but this application will be taken off at the end of the day.
So, we can get an RZ or an EDC person?
So, for RZ, you've already asked those people to fill out an application. So, you'll already have an application filed for RZ. For EDC, if you won't, if, if, if they're not appointed by the city, you, you could have someone you don't have an application for. So, for these specific slots, you can, it's really up to you how you want to do it. If you want to require a specific application for the a dual representative, or just ask either the board to make a recommendation to you, or that's where...
I'll, I'll contact the board here. Ask them to make recommendations or not. That work?
Works. That's your decision.
I'll, I'll get with that.
Yeah, because it basically boils down to drafting somebody.
Yeah.
And using the board chair to find somebody who's willing to do it.
And the rent for that.
Just like we did just today.
Ooh, arms twisting. We all were breaking your arms. It's gonna be so much fun.
Alright, so we're, we're sailing Main Street?
Well, I think we go through all of us, and they want to kind of go back through.
Yeah, lose some stuff around. I agree.
And, and we're not writing all of this, maybe, is everybody writing all this, Jana?
I am writing it down, and it's just kind of scary.
I'm writing it down.
I wrote Moses Flores. Okay, very good. Then let's move on to building standards. Looks like we have nine appointments and seven openings. So, up in the blue section, it looks like we need a District One, District Two. Now, you guys can hear things about the yellow. Oh, great. You got one more down there.
And one thing to keep in mind on Building and Standards Commission is you actually have two, the two members in yellow, who are, are members in request to be reappointed. They are two of the people on your list of being kind of out of compliance with the, they're, they're on more than two boards. So, so if you appoint them to, if you reappoint them to this board, then you're going to have to decide which other board not to reappoint. Sanjanet serves on Building and Standards, Reinvestment Zone, and TDC. And Derek serves on Building and Standards Commission, Funding and Zoning Commission, and CBA.
They're liable to bail out.
Would be willing to be drafted from Main Street, from the RZ.
And then she would be on four boards.
Well, and then as opposed to going on this, well, yes.
You would need someone to come from RZ that's not already serving on another board, yeah. Well, I don't think we even need to interview, because there's one District One, Charlie Ayers. I choose him.
I'd like to see Caleb.
So, Jack Barton is very interested in District Three.
But under...
He's very, very good.
But it has ultimate satisfactoriness. That the position he seeks.
Yeah, I think Jana was just making an assumption that he would be appointed to Sanjanet.
Correct, or whatever was available. Oh, so that wasn't the number one?
No.
So, that would presumably be Yellow.
Yes, that, yes, that was... That was presuming that Yellow would be reappointed, but I wasn't calculating for the fact that they're serving on a different board. So, if we fill, you know, every, if we're gonna go ahead and fill every position on here, then you can put him in a regular position or alternate position.
Okay.
So, Jack can go into a regular position, ready for District Three, if Sanjanet wants to stay at District Three Representative. Is that what you're saying, Jana? I think she better stay on the other two rather than this one.
I think that what we're, what we should probably do for this board is appoint someone new, because Sanjanet is, I, I would assume if she gets reappointed to RZ and let's see, EDC, she would probably forego this board, so let's just assume her position.
Good. And I'd like to see Caleb in District Two. And then, so we're, we're saying Jack for District Three.
We actually need two for each district.
Yeah.
Plus a profession-specific person. An alternate run regularly.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time keeping up with this.
Robert Bass is an electrician, and this is his first choice. I've never used Bass Electric. Are they a member of the, I mean, TAV?
Yes.
That sounds like a good...
But he lives outside the city, he doesn't...
Profession-specific can be city or county.
Okay, so Robert Bass for sure.
Look, for District Four, I'd really like to see us reappoint Derek Marshall. I know he'd have to drop off or something, and his term of Building and Standards and, I'm sorry, on the board, zoning board of adjustments comes due in twenty. And he's got two more terms on this one, so if he had to give one up, maybe give that one up, stay here. And then you've got two other applicants from District Two, Tony Hale and George Paulson, I think, would need to be promoted.
So, Tony Hale as an alternate position? So, there... Okay. And do you want to interview here?
You have me, right.
Okay, so for District One, you only have one applicant that, that has applied. So, that's another area that I think you guys will need to do a little bit more recruiting work, because we will need to appoint an alternate from District One. That's a solid individual for that spot. And then for District Two, I have Caleb as someone to interview, and you have one other applicant from District Two. It looks like, so... You all want to interview Caleb Enzo? You have two spots to fill.
Yeah, okay. Wait, we only have two applications and two spots.
Right.
District spots.
For District Two. So, it, you know, it's possible that you might want to consider, you know, trying to recruit some more for this board, because you've got several applicants, but they're not, you don't have a lot to necessarily cover in all of the districts, if that makes sense. Is it, is it necessary for us for the alternates to have a specific district? I think you put that in your policies specifically. Let me go, so we'll check, but I think you decided that you wanted the alternates to be represented from the city, uh, from the district, but they didn't have to, if they were serving, if they were serving as a voting member, because one of the general positions was vacant, they don't have to just replace the district representative. They can serve in any position, but you wanted to at least initially appoint an alternate for each district? Okay, District Three. If, if you don't appoint, if you don't reappoint Sanjanet, you will need a general and an alternate. We've talked about Jack Barton as someone to interview. Do you have others that you want to interview?
Senior preacher is somebody who was coming routinely to council and very, very interested in...
I can't, I'm sorry. Oh, she applied for the new emergency services and police citizens advisory, or the citizens advisory commission, and she currently serves on PSAB, and those are her top choices.
Okay.
She would prefer to stay on, because we dissolved PSAB, that board is gone away. She had her choice, this board would not be.
Would not, well, then, good. Glad you, you've got that information, because I haven't talked to her in a while. She's just so committed to City of Things. To keep her involved.
Brad Phillips might be someone to get interviewed as well.
District Four, we've already talked about, right? Tony and George.
Tony and George.
But again, you you don't want to interview Derek. Is that right?
Don't need.
I don't think we need to do that.
And then profession specific, you want to interview Robert? Do you want to interview?
Ginger's on there too. She is Ginger on a number of others? It doesn't say if she had any other applications.
She's on two other, but she's she lives in McLean County, so she's technically eligible. She submitted her application, so I want to put her name on here, but she's not eligible to serve because she doesn't live in the county.
Well, profession specific though.
Ginger is actually currently or was recently on this board. Her term expired in March of 2020. So this he's also on, I believe, involvement standards. But with the the change in the residency that y'all bid, she would be eligible for this board.
Looks like Mr. Bass. Okay, so I have Charlie Ayers, Caleb Longvita. The correct pronunciation, Robert Bass, Zoe Grant, Tony Hale, George Claus, Jack Barton, and Brad Phillips as the interview candidates. Is that correct? Did I miss anybody?
That's how many? Or seven spots? Yeah, that's it. It's nine, seven left, seven open spots.
No, well, I think you've got eight open spots because you've decided that you're not going to reappoint San Jeanette because she's on already on two other boards that are her preference. So you have the same number of applicants that you have positions. But you don't have the right mix. You've you've got a few more choices for four. You'll need another choice for one. And then you have exactly what you need for two and three.
How will this board be?
Usually they meet monthly.
Okay.
So if there's the number that's going to look at feels the number that we need to we need to interview them monthly? And exclude someone if we don't feel like that would fit. So how does that work?
What would be my recommendation?
Just still interview.
But you do have you you do you are going to even in this, you're going to interview more people than you can appoint. Because you're interviewing three people. Or you're interviewing three or two people for only one open District Four slot. But you are not entering you're not interviewing anyone for an open District One spot because you don't have an applicant, you don't have one in one applicant from District One, and there's actually two District One spots open. So you will make a choice in the interview process for which candidate you want to appoint to District Four. You'll confirm that everybody else is a good fit for the slots that you were considering them for. And then you'll need to continue to recruit for another District One position, if that makes sense.
So one question I have about the RZ and EDC, reaching out to them and asking them to appoint people to the Main Street. So that they're already on one board. We're asking basically that board to appoint them to another board. And then that becomes, well, so nominate and they nominate one person and they take it. And that puts them on two boards. Which means excludes excludes them from anything else. Doesn't involve catch that. Okay, are we good there? Citizens Police.
I think it's interesting, so many applications. It was slot, it was void. I wouldn't have expected this. Jana, can you tell me?
Citizens Police. And then click the.
I spoke to Mike Pilkington in the past year recently about this. Very, very interested in this. So very certain how good you would be.
That's her first first choice was DEI. I was replacing Jana. Okay. Who would get it first? Her way or my way?
Michael involved. Gary Smith or.
Wasn't sure if that was him or not, Ordis. Where does he go? I wasn't sure if that was the same Gary Smith, the same thing. Can you pull up Gary Smith's application?
No, I think that's actually not. There's a there's a gentleman that's very active in the local city. His name is Jerry Smith. He works for Baylor Scott &amp; Wine.
Great boys.
No, I think it's because Chief Smith lived in Valley Ranch, so he would have been in District Three. And this Gary Smith's in District Two. So I bet it's Gary Smith who works for Baylor Scott &amp; Wine.
Gary Smith is Gary with two bars. That's how.
And then there's Greg, River Greg, District Two. And then Judy Allen is in District Two. There's three.
Oh, Randall Glasskey, Tucker Glasskey, who's at University of Mary Arden.
He's such a nice kid.
And a really nice guy. He is in their fundraising farm. He graduated TFSB there for most of his career.
He goes by Tucker. He goes by Tucker, or he's related to Tucker. So that is Tucker.
And it last name Gonzalez. Preservation. What looking for who you want to interview, you can go by district if you want. Okay, so who do you want to interview for District One? You have two you have two positions that need to be represented by District One.
I would say Caitlin West, she's with Saint Vincent's of the Falls, she deals a lot with. And she lives in the historic district.
I haven't met her yet. Jordan would be good to interview for something.
Just Ms. Rose is here, actually. Participating in today's meeting.
How are you?
I'm great.
Okay, let's get you on this list. Would you add Ms. Rose, please?
I am doing it right now. Okay, so let me make sure I'm keeping up with you though. Okay, I've got Caitlin, Jordan, Ms. Rose, Mr. Walsh.
And Mr. Gonzalez. And then could you also look at Mr. Arwood and see what his.
I will tell you.
Why did you say?
So this is Mr. Arwood is actually running against.
Why?
So he he does understand. And then if you look on number five.
East District has two.
You've got two per district and then one one general city.
Yes, 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 sorry.
Anywhere in the city.
Yes, yes.
Okay, what about for District Two? Who do we want to interview?
Judy Allen. River Greg, Gary Smith.
Is Judy still on?
Oh, she she's going to be all off. This is the end of her term, link that she can serve. I enjoyed working with her. She's been very dedicated.
Judy, did you put Tucker Glasskey in?
Oh, no, I don't know.
Anyone else from District Two?
Are the McBride's related? Mia McBride?
Yes, there's several. I think it was a family. So there's several McBrides who are.
That's Pastor McBride and Dwayne.
And she McBride is Dwayne McBride. Mia is his wife. And Alexis is his daughter.
His daughter is really outstanding.
They are at Grace Temple Ministries. And so we, Mayor and I have opportunity to give them a presentation on our our business plan. And they they did one of our water distribution sites as well during.
So my preference is that you're these are your appointments and that they're yours.
Okay, I just didn't want to miss someone.
If you insist, then you can ask him. Yeah, these are your representatives.
Did we, I may have missed, are we going to interview at least one of the McBrides?
I don't have them down yet, but.
His daughter, again, is just, they're all lovely people, but she is just outstandingly impressive.
Would you like me to add her to the interview list?
Are we talking about Mia's daughter?
Alexis is the daughter. She goes by Lexi.
Yeah, yeah, Lexi.
Yeah, about greater services.
Yes. And it's nice to have a new younger generation.
Okay. What about District Three?
Well, Alan Lidle and Sandra Creach are both applying. And they're both married, or they are married to each other. And it's Alan's first choice and Sandra is on P and Z. Or no, wait, where? I think P and Z is Sandra's first choice, but Jana, you probably are more up to date on what Sandra wants.
Emergency Services is her first choice.
Oh, her first choice. Well, I certainly would like to, I don't know whether we want to interview both husband and wife, but Alan is they're both very, very, very committed to the city.
Sandra was on the public safety advisory board, which we eliminated and have split.
It's sort of the same.
Yes.
Sandra's the person who was on her way to the public advisory board meeting, was hit by a car and bounced across the street.
I attend the meeting.
Pardon?
I attend the meeting.
You what?
I attend the meeting.
Oh, good. You know what? You know exactly who she is and what's the story with her.
I think she was on her way, I think you all appointed her to the Conference of Plan Advisory Commission. And I think that's where she got injured. Okay, so District Three, I don't have anybody written down yet, so apologies if you guys told me somebody.
I think he said Alan Lidle.
That's his wife.
Joyce Adams, I think she was on something with civil service.
Is Kimberly Jurassic and Jeremy Jurassic related there? Anybody else? I don't I don't know his wife.
Tara, I'm sure I'm not pronouncing her name correctly, Monroe Woodbury is on animal services and she's interested in this.
She's also on. She is, and she requested to be reappointed.
She what?
She is on the library board as well, and she requested to be reappointed to that board. She has one more here.
I think that's what I meant, not animal services.
So if you appoint her here, she would have to come off of one of those other two boards. She, yeah, she wanted to be reappointed to the PSAB as well, so that pretty much eliminates her.
Can I suggest that we add Pastor McBride to that list? Dwayne McBride.
To District Two.
So when did that? Was competing with his daughter?
I hope he's not competing. I hope.
We need to read.
You know, but I think you need to interview him. That's his first choice.
I think she has DEI probably as her first choice.
Well, there's the answer, Jana.
That's her first choice is DEI.
Yes.
Oh, here it is.
Yeah, no, he needs to be, he needs to be interviewed for that. If we're getting too many, then maybe we, it actually doesn't make any difference to me, but maybe we take Lexi off.
Now, her choice was her first choice is DEI.
Right. So maybe we take her off of the seat there.
That, I mean, that is at your discretion.
What was that?
My general position is really this is a council appointed board, and so it's really y'all's y'all's appointments.
I agree.
Yeah, I'd like to see us interview Ken White, Bonnie, I mean, Rick Post, Mike Pilkington, Ryan.
Got that? No. Also, we only have two people for District Three, and there's the husband and wife, which, you know, you probably wouldn't want a husband and wife. Both appointed. Is there anybody else?
Joyce Adams.
She's on the Civil Service Commission. And she's a sister of Sandra.
That's it, that's it.
Did you have Alan Lidle in District Three?
Yes, I've got Alan Lidle and Sandra. No, it's District Three. I only have Alan Lidle and Sandra Creach from District Three, but they are a husband and wife. And you've got two vacancies for District Three, so you probably need to interview more.
Leonard Haline, Haline, the sister's choice.
And Joyce Sanders. Oh, yeah. Joyce is on something. She's on something, never mind.
This is also Eric Solone, currently on PSAB, and this was his first choice.
Jana, you said that Sandra, this is not her first choice.
No, that is the emergency services.
Well, then take Sandra's name off of that and just interview Alan, because it is his first choice.
And then include Eric.
Jerry Brannon is also his first choice from District Three. That looks like that's it for first choices. I mean, you're not limited to just first choices, but.
No, but it's it's good because it indicates real more interest. You took Sandra off.
I did. So now I just have. I did. So now I just have Alan Lidle, uh, Leonard Haline and Eric Stalbaum. Is there anybody else from District Three you want to interview?
I thought I heard someone say Jerry Brannon.
Jerry Brannon was his first choice.
Yes. Jerry.
Now.
District Four?
Kim White.
Kim White. Brent Coats. Mike Polkington. Ryan Reinhardt. Byron Shelton. That's five. Five for two spots.
And Mike also really wants some reinvestments in his own parts and boards, so he's going to make, have to make a decision.
So Byron only put in one application. And this is his choice.
Right.
Okay, so let me repeat. I have Caitlin West, Jordan Valentine, Sharon Rose, Denny Walsh, Michael Gonzalez, Lydia Allenese, Gregory Gray, Carrie Smith, Tucker Glasskey, uh, Lexi McBride, or did we say no?
We said no.
Yeah. Uh, Bishop McBride, um, Alan Lidle, uh, Leonard Haline, or Haline, Eric Stalbaum, Stalbaum, uh, Jerry Brannon, Kim White, Brent Coats, Mike Polkington, Ryan Reinhardt, and Byron Shelton. Did I miss anybody? Was that everybody?
All right.
You said District Four, you.
Kim White, Brent Coats, Michael Polkington, Ryan Reinhardt, Byron Shelton.
Next people for four.
High five.
We'll prove we only have five. All right, then let's move on to DEI. Nine openings, nine to fill, three, nine slots, nine openings to fill.
And these are not district specific. These are not district specific. What you all had talked about was, um, wanting to have a good mix of, um, representation from historically underrepresented groups. So you have not, um, you've not required yourself to appoint one from each group at any time. I think it was kind of your goal to make sure that you've got a broad representation, um, from, um, different, uh, groups that are, um, historically underrepresented. So some of those are, uh, the, um, I can remember my list, or actually I'm not going to remember, I'm just going to read it.
Well, we were going to put, we took Lexi off the previous one, we're just going to put her on this one, is that correct, Kim?
Yes, because this was her first choice.
Right.
Same thing with Jordan Valentine?
Yeah, Jordan.
We didn't do that. I did, I did have Jordan on the Citizens Police List, and we want to take her off. And just, and do both. Okay, there you go.
Would that, where would she fall? Her Women in the Community Religious. Of, uh, Elena. Oh, that's her.
She, she's part of the ministry.
She is listed, the group she represents, as Women in the Community and the Religious Community, it looks like.
Gil Holly. Billy, which is William Lee. Steve Jackson, he's a pastor. Robert Beaman. Alicia Dawson.
Patrick Ian.
Yeah, I think we've got one of the, uh, some of theirs.
So.
Did you say Gil Holly?
Yes. You did?
Yes. We said William Lee. Sorry, I couldn't hear. Because I'm in DA, he was the best chairperson in the community. He was very, very nice.
With Agnes Rose. Sharon Rose.
Jennifer, um, Rojas House. She, um, she, she comes with the, um, HR for this, um, emergency group. Jana, Sandra Creach applied for this one. It says by her name, People with.
With disabilities, I'm sorry, that was really long. Most people selected several on that. When I was copying and pasting it over, in order to get this to fit on one sheet, I had to scoot the boxes down, but it's People with Disabilities.
Oh, with disabilities. Sanders. Also with Jennifer on that, same thing works with them. Diversity is Women with Disabilities.
Yeah, she, she selected that she represented the Hispanic Latino community as well as people with disabilities.
She's, she's on.
Richard Walker. Richard Walker.
Oh, I, I don't know.
We have nine total positions to fill.
I have.
Stan. I have everybody.
Everything nine?
Yeah. What do you have, Brent?
Richard Walker.
Well, I have even more than that, though. Let me tell you who I have. Okay. Make sure I didn't do something wrong here or count wrong. Lex, uh, Lexi McBride, Jordan Valentine, is it Valentine? Gil Holly, Marcos Leon, um, Bill Lee, um, Steve Jackson, Robert Beaman, Alicia Dawson, Patrick Ian, Fran, Elena, um, Adel, Adelote, um, Sharon Rose, Jennifer Rojas House, and Richard Walker. You want to tell anyone else, um, on the list, anybody else who selected this as their first choice, or you happy with that list? I think that's. I couldn't quite keep up with, um, what groups. But I, I think, I think you actually have a pretty good representation um, from the people you've selected so far.
I didn't have when you get all this work. I mean, you're organized, we just get what we've done today organized.
Understand.
We are.
We are. Yeah, just go ahead. Take breaks as we need them. It's already nitty. No, that's okay. We'll keep going, Susan. Um, so are we? Not close, are we? We have four, eight, twelve for nine.
We have fourteen for nine.
That's probably enough. One name that keeps popping up is because you put in eight applications is, uh, Deontay Davis. And, um, let's, let's find the spot. Be sure we have a couple. Yeah, yeah, I agree. Okay, so, uh, let's move on to emergency services. This one is, uh, nine appointments. Because they're nine make.
District Four.
There's Mr. Davis. Lexi for District Two. You just have one for District Ten, Judy. Better get out there, girl.
Um, I think Ms. Digatano is on, she's on RZ. Is it just, is that the only one she's currently?
She's also on T E D C, but she, she, she. You probably shouldn't consider that for this board.
Okay.
If you want to interview Lexi.
I would recommend you go to District Four so that, um, you can have a bit in the District Three.
Yeah, so Katie McKesker-Reed, um, she works in the city, lives in Toledo, and I think that's a fit to Katie.
No, she won't be eligible and neither will.
So do you want a District Four?
That would be my recommendation since Susan stepped out.
I'd, I'd like to see us interview, uh, William Blumenthal, Bonnie Watson, Amy Pace, and Brandon, uh, Squills. Uh, those two slots to be for you.
And I'm sure Susan would want Ms. Creach. This was her first choice.
I'm sorry, Williams, can you repeat your list real quick? Make sure I got, I'm missing somebody.
Brandon, Nadine, Bonnie, and William. So it's only one app for District Two.
Nadine or Nina? Somebody?
No.
Okay.
So it's just one app for District Two, do we, um, do we want to have another district with three reps, or we harden the bass on two from each? Well, we can determine that, I guess.
You would need to change your policy.
Right.
You didn't, Ben.
We have several Citizens Police Advisory Commission from District Two, and I believe it said in the policy that we, you know, see that you would be there suited for another board, you know, that that was council's discretion, so we have several to choose from. And they're both, they're the two kind of breakouts from PSAB.
Alan, can you pull up, can you go to the Citizens Advisory, um, folder and pull up, uh, Ms. Turner's application?
Just scroll down.
Yes, please. Grace Temple Ministries is her church. She's a substitute teacher for T E D. Alan, did she, um, select yes regarding if she would be willing to serve on another board if council asked her to? I think that's closer to the. She did?
No.
Okay, so she, she indicated she was going to be considered for another board. Would you like to ask her to come to interview for emergency?
That might be a good one also. Two guys. Randall Glasskey on the list there.
Alan, could you pull up, um, Mr. Glasskey's application and see if he selected yes to that same question?
Emergency service.
No, he's, he's in the same folder. Glasskey. Thank you. Yes, he did, he would.
And Manuel Glasskey.
This is your choice, Alan.
I don't know if you, but I will just interview, you know, if they're, I'll get in trouble to put their application in, says something.
He also is heading up this organization, just trying to revamp the cities and get them involved.
Susan, we skipped District Three. Um, we're actually on the Emergency Services Advisory Board.
Right, and that's Sandra Creach's first choice. She's got six applications in and she's a very, very committed person. We hit Michelle to give her off if she goes on to others. Okay, well, Sandra, Jana, what, what, Sandra's only on, um,
what's safety advisory? She, she is still just on one because the PSAB has gone away.
Okay.
And then replaced with this one.
Well, this is her first choice and I would certainly like to see her interviewed.
So you have two District Three positions to fill.
But we took Sandra off, or, no, we took Michelle off. I mean, Michelle, I'm sorry.
She serves on reinvestment zone in T E D C, so if she was appointed to this board, she would have to come off of one of those.
And so what about Jerry? What we just used, I don't know him, but he's District Three, just, we just put his name on something else.
Anyone else?
I'm not familiar with Rachel. Does anybody know? Adam, Adam Minus?
I don't know her, but she's certainly got. Expressed interest in that would be a good reason to, if she's not on other things, Jana, do we know anything about her? Was it disabilities? Well, that's certainly interview her. She's not on anything now, right? Well, that's great to get people that have not historically been involved, involved. Really good.
She's got eight things that she's wanted to.
She just obviously didn't get involved. Anybody else? I've got. Deonta Davis, Richard Arwood, Lexie McBride, William Blumenfeld, Bonnie Walton, Brandon Velez. Nanette Pace, Ina Turner, Tucker Glasskey, Sandra Creach, Jerry Brannum and Rachel. Adam Maynes? Deonta Davis, Richard Arwood, Lexie McBride, William Blumenfeld, Bonnie Walton, Brandon Velez, Nanette Pace, Ina Turner, Tucker Glasskey, Sandra Creach, Jerry Brannum and Rachel Adam Maynes. Am I missing somebody? That's twelve for a board of nine. So for this board, you need three people who are residents of one of the eighteen neighborhood planning districts. And then you have. Five, I believe. And four. Just general members who live within the city. And then you need an affordable housing representative and a representative of a housing nonprofit organization. Which I think we might have to. Do some more outreach for, because I don't know that we got. Those last two.
First one that. Comes to mind on this list, Shannon Myers.
She's on the floor board. Well, the first person that comes to me is Susan Locke. And that's her, this is her first choice.
I think Terry Matthews, somebody we should.
Anna Morris.
That's Carla's daughter. Colin Crambley.
Lester Fettig didn't list a first choice, Jana. He's certainly been a very, very good P and Z chair, from my information.
Looked at planning and zoning, but he's actually, his.
A P and Z?
So he won't be able to, he's not going to be.
A P and Z, right, and what I mean is he's been, was, was or has been a very, very good chair. So if he's in, but he doesn't have a first choice.
It's planning and zoning. He indicated his first choice was to be reappointed, but he's not eligible to be reappointed, right? So on the next page, I'd like to include Doug Smith and Meg Petruca.
I'd like to see Patrick Ian. Robert Beaman.
You know, Mary Rose Collins, is she still on?
Well, could you pull up Todd Denton's application?
Denton?
And he's just redone that whole backyard.
And then it froze?
Can never get grass growing, I know you.
So he's on.
He, he applied for another one, put his name down there.
Yeah.
He owns a lock company out of.
What was his first choice?
I think it was Main Street.
We didn't, I tried to, didn't put him on Main Street, but he didn't live in Main Street, he was president.
And Todd Denton to the interview list?
Later night, we brought this Daniel to move there.
I take those kids over there.
We tore back. Never been since. So we brought a guy in and he finished off.
Are we meeting, I guess, Zoe Grant? You want to include her as well, because it's her first choice? She's been one of our first.
If people have a first choice, it's really good.
Wonder how many spots we're trying to put.
Oh, really, seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and then the affordable housing and housing nonprofit. Although Zoe Grant could fit with. In that category.
I just wanted, I didn't know to put this because I didn't want to assume that Caleb Longino has construction. And so I didn't know if he could be considered for a.
Who is this?
Not sure what. Caleb Longino. He's actually emailed him twice. Wanting to know when the, when the interviews are going to be.
Well, I mean, that's good.
Oh, yeah.
Great. Who was that person that sent you?
Caleb Longino.
District Two, oh, pardon, yeah, Caleb, sorry. He just had real interest.
Wonder if this applied to the Lomriard for credit. He passed.
I was about to say, and. Well, and we do want to keep Lester involved since he has to go off P and Z, he's been good. But I don't, I don't have a handle on what his first choice is if he has a first choice.
What, what did he apply?
P and Z, that he's not eligible.
I know, but what else did he apply?
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's got.
Would you, would you pull him up, please?
Four applications, hang on.
Are those in any particular order?
No, they're. Is there an issue that, isn't Michelle his other? Michelle that gave the.
Yeah, I think he'd be.
Absolutely.
I didn't know it was.
On the RZ?
He's very good.
Do you keep in mind though, he is the son of Michelle who's on RZ, so you would, you don't have a prohibition on that, but you did say you were going to consider.
Yes, he will, but.
Yeah, I know that, that would be a, I mean, that, that would be a nepotism issue strictly. But he's got accomplishments, he's, he can stand on his own. It's what he's done.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't have a problem interviewing him for, interviewing for the RZ.
I absolutely don't, and I agree he would be very good, and he steps on not sun. Which was nepotism.
Then, I mean, it may not, it may not technically be.
I'm, I'm, I'm being kind of facetious, only slightly though.
So how, how does our list look there? Okay, so I have Caleb. Longino. Shannon Myers, Susan Locke, Manuel Alame, Terry Matthew, Anna Morris. Kyle. Crambley, Lester Fettig, Doug Smith, Meg Petruca, Patrick Ian, Robert Beaman, Polino Hefia, Todd Denton. So fourteen total for nine. Oh, though, didn't have her down, okay, so fifteen. For nine slots. I do think you have two people that, two or three people that could be considered for affordable housing slots. But. Well, I guess Zoe could probably fit the housing nonprofit too, because she has those weeds though. So yes, you've got nine, you've got fifteen interviews for nine slots, and I do think you have. All the places covered that.
Did you put down Terry Matthew?
Yes, ma'am.
Cameron Benz, B I M T Z. Oh, is that Cameron?
She and Jordan are good.
Yeah, I couldn't, I didn't know her last name. Can we add her to that list?
Sure. Cameron Benz, is that right?
The first choice. At least on here. Maybe she can have a, in the future, a category that lists age. That we get a handle on, bring.
Can we, we can't ask that, can we? We, we do ask for demographic information so that we can track the. Diversity and inclusion initiatives, but we, I would highly recommend that you do not consider that in your appointment. Because you could actually, you could actually be construed that you were, even though your intention is to not, to not discriminate against someone, it could be construed that way, so. That's kind of a balance you have to be careful about.
Certainly do, but we do want to foster younger people that have some interest to bring them forward.
In Cameron, yeah.
Yes, that's, that's where I was going with that.
Will be fourteen or fifteen?
About sixteen, actually, now with the addition of Zoe and Cameron.
So we move on to the DVA. We pass.
Alan Garcia. I think Christine was serving on the. Board that you all eliminated, which is escaping you right now, so. You know, she may be someone you want to consider interviewing for this board, because she had an active term on the Building Board of Appeals. Which has been combined with this board now, or the duty test has been combined.
I thought RZ was Mike's first choice.
Says here, good for applications, this is for sure. Look, look, Mike.
Well, clearly this, he fits the category.
He's currently on the Parks Board, but he did not request to.
Is, is he coming it up?
I just thought that he actually has two full terms left, because he just was appointed to fill out an expired term, so.
I thought RZ was his first choice, just from a conversation I had with him, but clearly not, so. I must have misunderstood something.
So are we adding Kristi Andrews? So Kelly, Christine, Mike. Derek, if on this board. You, you all decided you wanted to prioritize keeping him on Building and Standards Commission. So it's going to be either this board or Planning and Zoning Commission that he's going to need to come off of.
How much time do we have left on planning and zoning?
In, in September of this year. His term on DVA is expired, he can't, you, you can reappoint him, but. Term leave, he has more terms, he could be reappointed, but he would then be on more than two boards. You're going to need, it looks like you're going to.
You go in and take off the people that don't meet the criteria. You might as well interview everybody and see if he fills the slot.
You, you may have to do some recruiting on this one, because you don't have enough. Well, you may have barely enough. Okay, so everybody. Yeah. You could do Kelly and. Christie, Christie as one, you know, one being the. Regular and one being alternate for architecture engineer. Assuming Richard Hernandez. He just hasn't responded to you yet, Jana?
Hasn't, and actually. I was just able to reach out to him because he didn't have an email or address or anything listed, but. Richard Wilson had his information, so he relied it to me.
And then you've got another master plumber that you could consider. As an alternate. Do you want to interview the current board members? I mean, Richard. Karen Lee Langley and Lee Armstrong. Assuming you're not going to consider reappointing Garrett here, or are you?
Got a question to ask you.
It's on the opportunity to choose.
Let him think. But don't we say in the policy, though, at this point, you're appointed to last year?
The opposite.
It's not your own first. It looks like he was appointed to these best same time.
Um, let's see, D B A, I think is a, um. And he probably is the first one he was appointed to. You all want to interview the current board members?
Let's get real. Yeah, I prefer, rather than say you really talk about, I'll be sure that you get some people in there. I have to be in college station at three o'clock.
Yeah. So why don't, I think, well, why don't we now, it's a little bit cumbersome, but that's all right. Why don't we just concentrate on District Four for each of these boards, Wyndham? You give us your input, who you want for each of, uh. Each board or commission, then you can go and fill in the rest.
Uh, Airport Advisory Board, this is not that. Okay.
And we're just doing your input.
Yes, yeah.
Is it input back?
Yes, yeah. And I'm sorry to do this to y'all, but I have a great lot of time in college station. Uh, Tyler Germstip, certainly want to see him interviewed. I think Marty and Jerry Cloud should not interviewed at least be appointed. Uh, what is the deal on, um. Tate Suterman, uh, he is not, did he step down or come back? Does he miss meetings? Because he's made the last four meetings.
Before that.
Before that, he missed them, you're right.
Means and he did not submit an application.
Okay, so he's off that side. Uh, you don't have a corporate aviation person that I know of on here, y'all know of here. That may be corporate aviation. We're going to, I tried to recruit, but I would tell everybody. Yep.
So have Tate, uh, if you want, if you want to reappoint him, we would just ask that he do an application.
So you want, let's leave that out for. Uh, Tyler Germstip is the really one I wanted to get in front of everybody.
All right, let's do everyone.
Yeah, what's next? Have any major preferences on Amber Skelton? More on civil service, you're doing twenty-one first.
And that one, actually, I appoint and y'all confirm.
And I have it.
I've never, uh, we've never done it that way, but that's what state law says we should have been doing. Do you not have any preference on Development Standards?
So, so he'll keep him off of Parks and Rest.
So this is eligible, yes, to return.
Yeah, and you said he wants off.
He did not submit an application. He did not select Parks. And I reached out to him actually, because he just submitted his application yesterday. So he's late, so I'm first to reach out to him.
No, his term. No, his term is still valid right now, so he can. I think we need to confirm that he doesn't. Be appointed to another board, because his current term is through next year. So let, let us check in with him and make sure that we're interpreting that correctly.
I know that I'm going to have, is this by district? Yes, it is. And so Joey's on there, and then we've got Mike, or we don't have Mike. Depending on what you do with Lester, I would say District Four Representative of Parks and Recreation.
Um, what about JD McBride?
Uh, David McBride.
JD, Ed Jeremiah.
Oh, yeah. That would be a good one to interview. You know Tiffany Page? Could you pull that up, please, Paige?
In the parks.
Great joy.
If you scroll down to kind of her job description.
Where I retired. Yeah, I would interview her too.
Yeah.
That's the three that I would say, we have one slot in District Four evidently, and I would suggest. Uh, that those three get in. So P and Z, you've got how many open?
We have one open. That's, is that on the right?
And I think if we, I'm sorry, I don't remember what we said. She's here and her term. Wasn't ended until September, but she's going to be disqualified.
It ended last September and she held over. So she's probably still currently a resident. You could reappoint her, but she would very quickly.
She told us she's moving in March.
Yeah. So you can't be able.
No.
So we would need to point out this. Why, why does it say Lee Armstrong has it going up to twenty twenty-eight?
Um, so the appointment is the, not the term, but the years in which that particular position gets appointed. So Lee, Lee's term is not at for reappointment right now. So if you have, if there's something in the appoint for term column, that is the, that is someone who. Term has expired or is expiring, and you're appointing them in this round. So the position for Lee, uh, that Lee is holding gets appointed in twenty-two. It's a three-year term, it gets appointed again in twenty-five, the better, so he, he will only be el, he won't be eligible for reappointment. Because he's serving his final term, but somebody's going to get reap, or get appointed to that position in twenty-two. Twenty-five and twenty-eight.
I don't really, I mean, there's several people who are nominated. Uh, most explorers should be interviewed for that and apply for it, and that's something he normally doesn't do, so he's probably interested in.
Donna's actually in District Three. There are, there, there are actually not any.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about. Does he have zip, I'm sorry, I'm confused. Does he have? And I don't have anything to say about.
Next year.
Next, next one of three.
You're a year and a half ahead of yourself.
Well, I'm usually a year and a half behind last. Reinvestment Zone. How, how does, how does Steve Wright's situation fit in, is there? He, he's shown as a city appointee, but he's also T I S D.
He is, uh, appointed by T I S D to the Reinvestment Zone Board. He is appointed by the City Council to the Airport Board and to T E D C, so he is serving on three boards right now.
But he needs to make a choice, which he wants to step off of.
According to your policy, yes.
So what, how many are we trying to, uh, place here on the, on Reinvestment?
You only have, um.
One.
Five appointments to make, um, and only one of those have a, um. So, uh, Michelle DeGatano, um, is that for reappointment? She's eligible for reappointment and has expressed interest. Um, Tyler is not eligible for reappointment. He's termed out, so that's going to be a vacancy. Um, Raymond Smith is, uh, up for reappointment, and he's eligible for reappointment, and his, his, uh, indicated he would like to be considered for reappointment. Blake Pitts is up and would like to be reappointed. Harry Adams, yeah, is, uh, I'm sorry, he wouldn't be up until September. Um, and then Mr. Mayo is up for reappointment, and we, um. We have not yet, um, have the opportunity to, to get in touch with him, but he has some personal circumstances, so I would suggest you, you might just wait on that one. Um, would be my recommendation. So, um, and then the rest of the appointments are done by the other participating taxing entities. So really, if you desire to reappoint the people who are currently serving and are eligible to continue to serve, you just have one vacancy. And that would be Tyler's.
I would like Steve Lester Fettig to be interviewed.
I would.
Uh, Mike.
Not necessarily something you all have to discuss right now, but also keep in mind that per state law, you all have to appoint the chair to the Reinvestment Zone. So you will also need to appoint a new chair to the zone. All the other boards, you have given them, you delegated that authority to those boards, but state law requires you to appoint that chair for the zone. So you all have to choose the next chair as well.
I'll tell you what, which really bears on that interview process. The, uh, Youth Advisory Commission.
Not right now, is my recommendation.
And that's it? He, he would, we need to address that?
I would promote Steve.
He would, so, um. And then, let's see. You will need to. Consider, so you, so Steve Wright, uh, needs to, his term ended in September of twenty twenty, as well as Sanjanet's. So you'll need to consider reappointing them, um, if that's your desire. And then if, uh, and then Tyler, um, would come off, um, and whoever you appoint as the chair would, um. Of the Reinvestment Zone would automatically be your appointee in his place. Because that position is tied to the RZ chair, which should be more chair of womanship.
So we've not had anybody that fly after any of these positions?
We have not, um, we have, we have not, because they are not, um. Technically city boards, so we can do the same application process, um, if you would like, or if y'all want to have a different application process. That's also an option, but we have not opened, we have not done an open application process for T E C at this point. That's another decision point that staff will be, you know, direction on.
So how would people select in the past? Just not an application, just pulling names out of here?
Um, in the past, it was considered a city board because the city did all of the appointments.
Right.
Um, in the. And I, I think that you have not had an open application period since that change was made. Because the people that were serving were eligible to re-reappoint, so you haven't crossed that bridge yet. And, and you still don't have to if you want to continue to appoint, that your openings are still eligible to be reappointed. So if you want to just do that and hold off on an open application period until. Um, you, you will need to do that, uh, for sure, though, in the fall, or decide how you're going to do that in September. Because Dr. Avox, uh, is terming out in September, so. We can, you have several options for this appointment cycle. Um, you can just reappoint, um, Steve and Sanjanet, um, because they are eligible. You can do an open application period. Um, the Tyler's position will automatically be replaced by whoever you, um, appoint as chair to the RZ. And then when we open application process back up for these, for our, uh, regular September appointments, we can include T E C as an option. Then you'll have a position to fill, um. Or we can do it however.
I'm glad we had that discussion. I don't know if I can repeat all of it, but I'm glad we had. I think that kind of covers the ones that are pending out there that I wanted to. And I'm going to apologize.
Well, it's nothing wrong with Kevin, so, there's no problem. That'll happen soon.
We'll go back, if you don't mind, and add one person to me through library claim, uh, for an opportunity to interview. Um, they. Drive carefully.
Oh, that takes all the fun out of it. That takes all the fun out of it. What last ticket I got was camera.
So we could go back real quick to, uh, zoning board of adjustments. Um, I still need, um, clar, clarification on if you want to bring in the incumbent for interview. And what you want to do about Derek.
What?
The incumbent.
Incumbent.
I think Derek needs to get a phone call and ask what would his choice be.
Would you like staff to do that, or, um?
Good staff do it.
And nominate Jana.
And then, um, I don't think the incumbent.
No, we, we didn't on a couple of other boards.
And then we're on Development Standards.
So where are we?
Development Standards.
Yeah, the one we flip through these pages, Laura, that's the work we got done to it.
Yeah.
To get to, so, thank you for that. This is very easily used.
I know you're cursing, because we didn't tell you any of this from the interview. And how many, how many times have we said this to you because X, Y, Z has occurred?
All right.
Jana's polar blind now, but don't worry, she'll be fine.
She's strapped to her sleeve.
And she has little voodoo dolls for each county. Saying she's helping any of this.
I was like, we, you know, we had this thing called a snowstorm, like, a week ago, and I had a lot of time. So I didn't have electricity, so I was going to my car and charging.
Oh, damn. It freezes to death at the same time and no water.
We could have got to the central fire station.
She did my time.
We only had four wheel.
My car was the best place. It was the only place that was warm. I put my kids in there at night.
I put my kids in there at night to watch a movie before putting them to bed. Because we had, I mean, life is rough when you have no electronics, ten, four, and a two, or a five and a three-year-old. I don't want to eat.
I just don't know.
You ran out of melatonin.
We just didn't lose power. We had one flicker, and that's it.
I'm glad.
So we've got three.
Well, the standard board, here we go. Yes, we have three.
What are we doing here? Development standards?
Yes.
So you actually have six terms that you need to appoint for this one. You have two that are vacant. So Brian, Ryan Hart doesn't want to be reappointed. He just had a vacancy that was already in existence. And then Tanya, looks like she doesn't want to be appointed. So I'm sorry, you've got three appointments to do that are that are going to be without an incumbent. And then it looks like we're still looking to hear back from Jeffrey Schneider to make sure he's willing to be reappointed. So it could be... We know Blake Pitts is willing to be appointed, but he is on three boards as well. So and those are his Reinvestment Zone and T E C. So he may not want to be reappointed if he knows he would lose, have to step down from one of those other boards.
Then what do you think about Jimmy?
Yeah, I think it's his first choice. Yeah, so yeah, absolutely. Prabelski, Jimmy Prabelski. Little bit too.
It's Jeremy Jurassic's first choice also. Deontay to the pod.
Is it just like four? Is that right? Let me figure out again, I'm sorry. So I think you're going to need to fill Blake's spot, Brian's spot, Tanya's spot. So you have four that you'll... That you need to fill. And then depending on if Jeffrey gets back with us and lets us know that he's interested. If not, then you'll have a fifth. No, he is eligible for reappointment. So and then the other... The others' terms have not yet expired. But and this is a decision point for you. Ginger is not eligible to continue serving because she doesn't live in the county. But what we had talked about was if someone had... Someone was currently serving a term, they could at least finish that term before. And then you just wouldn't be eligible to be reappointed. So we assume that we... That she could stay on based on earlier conversation. So four, maybe five, depending on not Jeffrey.
We also had some profession-specific spots.
And here, the thing you want to keep in mind, or what you have historically done with this board, I should say, is you you want to have kind of a good mix of those professions. So you know, you're... Again, this board's purpose is to help advise staff, you and the P and Z on R U D C, on our construction detailed documents. So you know, people representing the construction industry is generally what, you know, you're looking for. So you... Your professions that can be represented are civil engineering, general construction, utility construction, street construction, home building, architecture, surveying, real estate, banking, insurance, or land development.
They're not home.
You don't have that listed as a specific.
Well, loss is put is many other places, so that's fine.
But you do have a couple of general spots as well.
Yes.
That aren't professional specific. So I'm sorry, I don't know Mr. Harris, so I don't know what his profession is. Ginger is engineering. Jonathan, I think he's some...
C H V C.
I want... Yeah, I think he's A H V. Jeffrey is road construction or street construction. So and then Joey is agility. Yeah, he really is utility. So I... We have him listed as general, but he probably could go one of your profession-specific slots if you wanted... If you just had some other general people you wanted to include.
Do you like some of the... Like, I don't need Jimmy's name, Jeremy, Clinton, whatever. They just kind of went down and flipped everything. Interested in this specific one or just? Exactly. You don't have any sense.
Yeah.
You have Tony Hale.
I do think that you have them somewhere. Remember that you need to somewhere. It's not building standards. Building standards.
Do you want to do one?
Do you want to?
Well. Yeah, he's a... He fits one of the profession-specific slots.
Yeah.
Hillington, obviously. But I think we got him one, two already. How many?
You're interviewing him for two boards.
And he put first choice on one of the other boards.
B B A and R Z. And then depending on what his answer is in terms of he intended to step down right now from parks or just he wasn't... His term wasn't up, so he wasn't selecting that as one of his applications right now.
That's something we need to know pretty quickly.
Today or Monday?
So anyone else on development standards? I've got Jimmy Prabelski, Jeremy Jurassic, Deontay Davis, Todd Denton, and Tony Hale, so far as people you've mentioned.
Leonard Howie, please.
I got it.
What was the last one?
Howie. We just had Citizens Police Advisory Commission to interview for.
Thank you. So if you were putting people with disabilities, does that mean that they are disabled in some way? Or they're just want to acknowledge that community?
The question that we asked was if you're applying for the D E I, please select which group, if any, you represent. So that doesn't necessarily pass... That, you know, doesn't necessarily mean that the the person themselves is disabled, but they're... They could, you know, work with an advocacy group or something like that. So we really left it up to the person who was applying to indicate if they felt like they represented that particular group. So I would just point out that so far, the people that you are... That you're interviewing for the Development Standards Advisory Board are pretty heavy on the real estate. You've got, I think, three representatives from real estate, and you've only selected five people to interview. So you may be two... You may consider some more construction people to balance that out. Because again, this board primarily deals with details about construction standards.
So Todd, these construction industry, you're just sort of in the slide.
Yeah.
And first.
And he was one of the five I had.
It would be nice if we knew what Jeffrey Schneider was going to do with the road construction.
Grab sandwiches.
We have half lunch. I didn't.
And I'll go for it. I didn't know we were doing this.
Well, we didn't know we were going this long. See.
You said, based on what you've written down, you're saying you're heavy on the real estate?
Yes. So you said for the four slots you need to fill, for sure, you need to fill. We've got Jimmy Prabelski, who's real estate. Jeremy Jurassic, who's real estate. Deontay Davis, who's real estate. You've got Todd Denton, who has... Who's eligible for construction, but may not be in the kind of the... In the on-the-ground kind of construction. And then you have Tony Hale, who's real estate. And those are eligible, but they're just not... You just may not have as well-rounded of a board yet if you don't have.
I texted Mike to ask him if he was going to step down. He said I would rather be on some other board.
Okay. So he's going to... Did you make sure he knew his term hasn't expired? Is he going to leave? If he's going to let leave an expired term?
Are you texting him again? Would you tell him probably that I'm confused? I thought Artis was his first choice. And he'll put that on his...
Barbecue or Bravo? I don't know what Bravo is.
I think that's what I chose. It looks like him. Or short, Judy. No, she was.
Bravo. Judy. Bravo or barbecue?
There's also bacon.
Man. Barbecue or Bravo?
At the sandwich tab?
Yes.
I don't believe it's barbecue.
Janice, either.
No. No, I'll take what you have in your hand.
Just not tell you what it is. Tell me what you want. You can have both.
Just set them right here so they can see what they are.
Yes.
So we have duct peppers, Sprite, Sprite Zero, Coke, Diet Coke, and two waters.
Water, please.
I'll take the water.
Make it Diet Coke. Really.
I didn't mean to bring it.
Richard.
Yeah, I'm actually ready. Stacy, barbecue or Bravo?
Bananas.
Banana.
Sandwich, I think it was Bravo.
Dr. Murphy or...
Yeah.
Obviously, I guess.
What kind of sandwich? Gloria, what kind of sandwich?
Whatever is not barbecue.
Bravo or barbecue?
Either one.
No, you choose.
I don't know about barbecue.
Bravo? All right, which one? Bravo or barbecue? Actually, it looks like we've run out of Bravo. You get barbecue. Sorry, you should have spoken up earlier.
Good job, team.
Thank you for lunch.
You're welcome. Yes, Gloria.
I did kind of grunt.
It's on the mayor's tab.
You're all welcome.
I've got yelled at, Keith. Thanks.
I have to get her fed by 6:30. Ford's a long. If I get to feed water, I got to.
My good toddler.
You what?
My good toddler.
Okay. Are we good there or no? You feel like there was some god who lurked in that? Did Mike text you there?
I just wanted.
Overcoming of... That she's in the plan that she decided to go on. But she was never eligible to begin with.
I think she... That was Blakey Adams. I think what we decided, and we can confirm this with council, because her term is up in '22, she can stay on until then. But she just isn't eligible to be... After that, yeah.
We'll also look at Leonard Howie. He's general, but you know, we said in two applications.
Might might suggest that you that perhaps you consider maybe reaching out to Tabba to see if he can get a little bit more applicants from the construction side.
To development standards.
So so far, I've got Jimmy Prabelski, Jeremy Jurassic, Deontay Davis, Todd Denton, Tony Hale, and Leonard Howie for interviews. And then if you do have any additional feedback, then add them. Will you, Joey? You might just have one vacancy there for you'll need to do three appointments, but two of the members have expressed a desire to continue to serve. And that's Jeremy Langley and Colino Pexia.
Which one are we doing?
Planning and zoning. So assuming that you are wanting to reappoint them, then you would need to consider someone from District Three to fill Donna Wright's position that she's going to vacate.
I believe you'd ask them.
I'm sorry?
Brian Chandler.
Okay. Thank you.
The only people in District Three that I know personally are Jeremy, Alan, and Sanders. Alan and Sanders are married. Sanders had expressed her first choice was one of the other things that we have her listed. So I would say don't. What color is her hair?
I actually know Alicia Dawson.
Pardon?
Anybody know Alicia Dawson?
No.
She's on the library.
Maybe that's, I've just seen her name.
She did submit an application.
She's on what now?
I hope she's on Park, maybe too.
Yes, she is. We have Steve Jackson.
I didn't, um, Alan, did you want, uh, Steve Jackson?
Margaret Castor.
You know, we have Judy, the citizen protest, Steve Jackson.
He's claiming citizens for protest.
Or, you might have.
Not the legal district. Only being easy. Black, you better know.
Julia, you can do this, please.
Her term's not up until September. And she will turn out. So we just need one district. You said Jeremy and Alan. Are we?
A ton of people were there too, so they were gonna put their application in.
Where does Charlie Ayers live? Anywhere?
My neighborhood.
Your, where you live, your area?
So we're good there, we have the next one. Daniel Jean lives in District, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, so actually, you guys could, um, you could consider him in the District Three slot, and so you.
I'm ninety-nine percent sure.
I'm pretty sure he lives on Flower. So I think you could actually select someone from anywhere in the city. Cause he could fill the District Three slot, so you've got the one city slot.
Christine Park, she is so good. Did she list a first choice on anything, Janet, to your knowledge?
I think it was Main Street.
Oh, was that her first choice?
I don't know.
Or maybe it was a work.
To Main Street? Yeah, it was, it was Main Street, was her first choice.
Fine.
We talked about her as the educational.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, for Main Street, good.
I'm going to put, put this short. Anybody, you guys wanna interview?
That was Katie McBride's first choice.
Yeah.
Um, Jeremiah McBride.
I'm gonna put, um, Moses Flores, because before, um, Wendell left, when he thought there was a District Four person, he mentioned him, and I got a little confused, so, and I can also reach back out to Wendell and make sure there's not someone else he wants to add. So I'm gonna go ahead, if that's okay with you all.
Can we add, um, Marcus Leon? I don't know, he only has some of the best shots. Um, Marcus Leon. I just printed it out.
Um, Kathy Kruger's application.
You know what's really interesting to me is it seems to used to be the most desired board, and it's, I mean, plenty of people are very interested, but it's not.
I know.
The overwhelming.
And with reinvestment zone, I, I mentioned that to somebody, probably Jana, is I'm, that there are far more people selecting, you know, the police or DEI as their first choice than some of the historically
Absolutely.
um, most competitive boards.
And if we had predicted, or if I had predicted, I would have been a hundred percent, or quite wrong.
So we can charge the broker.
And that's just recommended, changing, which is really, I think, a really good thing coming out of this.
Can we add Kathy to that? Good.
Maybe too often we don't have the ladies.
It is her first choice, that's why I wanted to be our application, I'm not familiar with her, but.
I mean, historically, it's all.
Mayor.
Yes.
We're looking at P and Z.
Yep.
And, um, I did realize that since, uh, um, Donna is moving out, I had Daniel Jean in the city slot, just because there were three people from District Three, so I just had slotted him there, but we can actually move him to the District Three slot, so you can appoint anyone throughout the city this time for P and Z. So we have.
Daniel lives on Flower.
JD McBride, Moses Flores, Marcus Leon, and Kathy Kruger currently as the.
We're looking for just one spot.
Just one spot. So if there's anybody you would like to be interviewed on the day they live in the city.
And what was the four so far?
Uh, JD McBride, Moses Flores, Marcus Leon, and Kathy Kruger. I wrote down Moses Flores because that's, uh, one of the names that Wendell had mentioned before he left, but then I turned, uh, into District Three. Well, I'm not District Four, so I'm gonna follow back up with him to make sure he knows. And add anybody else if, if not, uh, there's a desire there.
There's a half Bravo sandwich, if somebody else wants another half sandwich.
How are we gonna do it if, um, is, if there's one person, several different, um, maybe that's the one interview. Do we have, you know, and then we're only picking different, so maybe should we, you know, do it for each one, separately or off?
So, that's a great question, and it's really up to you all, um. I had originally had the interview scheduled just random, you know, just filling in people whenever it was convenient, but I realized that it's probably more helpful for you if you're interviewing in groups, so the people that, you know, when you look at who you're interviewing for Airport Board, you do all of them together, and then you have some time to discuss, you know, as a council while it's fresh, who you may want to consider for the actual appointments. Um, so from that standpoint, the people who are being considered for multiple boards would have to come and interview multiple times, so that's definitely a downside. The upside is you have, you know, instead of just interviewing for this board and then switching to that board and back and forth, and then at the end of the day, you know, having to remember everything. Um, so, but from a board applicant standpoint, it's certainly more convenient if they were only interviewed once. So that's just something you'll have to, that's a good question though.
It really is better for them. We'll just have to try to focus our minds. This involves your position. So are we? Don't forget that.
I think one of those. We haven't made any progress.
No, we aren't, is Dirk President?
No, we haven't made any progress. Are we done with P and Z?
Yeah, I think, I think the last question was whether I was.
Can you say all about one more time, Wes?
JD McBride, Moses Flores, Marcus Leon, and Kathy Kruger.
We're going for the direction.
Not a popular board.
Which one was that?
For a vacation.
Historic property, this, hey, you know?
Yeah, yeah. I think it's house, definitely not historic.
We didn't go by Scott and White, did we?
Um, well, closer to Scott School. I mean, you're close to Scott School. Scott Elementary.
Historic property gets, it's been over fifty years, that's a historic.
Maybe David has moved.
I got about four of those there.
So it says, the definition that they're supposed to be is that it's fifty years old or older and has historic significance to the community or architectural stuff. So if, it has to be at least fifty years old, and then if it's that, then it also has to either have architectural or community significance. So just having a fifty-year-old house doesn't qualify you.
It says that he lives on Forty-Fifth South, Twentieth Street.
Same place as he's, I guess, he, it may be fifty years old, but it's not, it's not.
So, well, these three folks would definitely need to prepare their case, uh, he has Alice Hartley and Beth Mackey.
Yeah.
They all live in very historic homes and they're cut up.
Mine got Meg.
Meg also.
That's her first choice.
Margaret Chukka.
Well, I told her it needed to get involved in things beyond.
Oh, good.
Is David in?
I, I did not, but it is one application.
David's, really, his house does not meet the criteria.
I'm not gonna. Michael is someone who, um, he owned property as one, and then he was here, he was very much wanted to get involved.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, great.
I think that's amusing.
He actually lives in Weston Hills. And that's why I'm not understanding why historic property owner must be going into that thing.
Yes.
History, with historic properties. Um, maybe he just means he has, in his own, maybe so. Not that he's involved. You wanna pull him up and see, if you mind doing that?
Okay.
Been involved. In certain districts in the center.
Who's the people, Jessica, that I told you about one time, how they're relatively new historic district? He's a retired lawyer, they grew up, he grew up here.
Oh, the, uh, they.
Mayfield.
Mayfield. I.
And whose house are they in?
They are in the house, hide.
There.
Near the left. It's behind the left.
They're at Eleventh. Okay.
Well, whose house was it? Cause he always.
Patty, uh, Kenny Ward used to live there. How and Kenny Ward, it's been a couple of, the preacher at, uh.
Are you sure we're talking.
Retired lawyer, surrounded. He always, the first thing that is now is big house. And who used to be there? Huh?
It's the north side thing. Retired, a big, a water's house.
Smile.
Well, whatever, whoever we're talking about, is he on here? I'm surprised.
So I think Michael looks like he owns, he still owns a piece of property in Louisiana that's historic. And we didn't say that historic property had to be in Temple, just that he had to, they had to own one.
Okay.
So it, that's kind of a line that y'all can choose, but.
Very broad.
He, he just, um, moved away with my heart, he brought me a keen face, we'll say that tomorrow, to introduce himself. Um, but to be honest, so he was, he was. Very nice.
We just wanted to. Very great to get some good involvement, wonderful, we should. One, two, three, four, five. I don't know who.
I know that Guy Fowler and Heather, his fellow.
Why didn't come here, Jessica?
Neighborhood.
What brought him here?
He probably called me.
He's got, oh.
It says.
This is in A.
He didn't answer it. He's just out of the lake.
He's on that.
He'll be a professional. Why do people want to go all out to run Northside? Kelly Garcia's on there again. And David can also be profession specific.
So I don't think that guys need qualifications, but you wouldn't, Realtor wouldn't need to be profession specific. You are very specific in your profession, specific anthropology, history, folklore. That is.
Anthropology?
We put anthropology in this?
Have you ever heard of listening?
We must admit archaeology.
Story.
Didn't we? Um, you said anthropology, history, folklore, architectural history, conservation or curation, architecture, historic architecture, or landscape architecture, historic preservation, historic preservation planning, or general or building construction.
I was gonna say, we must admit archaeology.
When he got, uh, landscape, you know, there's.
David?
There.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could.
Going that out.
Could Guy fall under preservation, since he's part of that historic group?
That's right. I think, you know, it's not his profession, but what you may wanna do, you know, maybe we might miss the mark a little bit here, we might, we might be too specific, cause I think what you're, what you're trying to get to is people who have a demonstrated interest in historic preservation and have some, um, expertise or some, something to offer in that, so. So, um, I would, I would offer maybe that we could work on the language and consider bringing something tweaked back to you if you, I mean, you got, uh, just, um, I'm not advocating for Guy, but I just know that he was on the historic preservation, um, committee. So i- if he's not eligible, if, whether he's the person you choose or not, if he's not eligible, we might have missed the mark. Cause I guess is the best way.
Yeah.
Want to say it, so.
It's easy to miss.
So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and put him on the list for interviewing unless y'all object.
Yeah.
And what about Fadyan?
Well, if you're gonna tweak it for Guy, tweak it enough that it includes Fadyan.
Would you, uh, can we look at Jeremy Cameron, this is his first choice?
Also Heather. Guy Fowler's old.
That's down from you, Tim.
It's Brooke, but, um, maybe Brooke Heather, Heather Brooke. Do what? Who's that?
Yes, and they both are.
In fifteen.
Oh, I know. First name is Heather.
One street down from you.
Yeah.
One of them.
Is that one of the all across the room? That might be the one right across King. I'll answer it.
Maybe Judge Person.
Oh, wait, what was that person's name?
Cameron.
Cameron.
Jeremy.
I don't know who that is. He lives right next door to Judge Person. Just to the north. He at one time was a band teacher at one of the middle schools.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
Small.
Yeah.
Uh, dark here.
Very nice.
I promise you that home means it's more fifty years old. If it has any significance on that. Yeah.
Have to watch the interview number now.
Well, does he qualify?
You said that one is not fifty years old.
Oh, no, I promise you that home.
I was thinking, unless it's a loss of coming.
Yeah, it has to be.
Yeah.
And then Heather Fowler, is that, yes, she was Guy's daughter.
That's what I thought.
It is that she only applied for two and she currently is on historic.
Where does she live?
We haven't.
That's Heather?
She on North thirteen also.
He's a real estate agent.
Yeah, that's her, that's Guy's daughter.
It's Brooke, she doesn't have Brooke.
Yeah.
So she, her name is Heather Brooke, Brooke Heather?
Heather Brooke.
Oh, okay, that's what's confusing it is. Okay, so are we adding Heather?
Yes, her Brooke.
No, we absolutely, again, another, another younger person getting involved.
And are we adding? Jeremy Cameron?
They're together? He said the same address. Would Jeremy and Heather live?
No, Jeremy is seven fifteen and Heather's thirteen.
Oh.
Okay, north, but both of them thirteen. See, I start rumors.
And it was a different.
What about Jeff Swindell, Swindoll?
And we put Meg Patricia on.
He doesn't belt.
Graham, you put Meg Patricia?
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, that's good. See the way I said that? He doesn't belt. Scratch.
Where's Verbena? Oh, that's in Belt.
She said Mary in that too. You have some city county. And his profession is a librarian, so I guess that needs.
Oh, I know. Um, he has this one. Because there's the.
I'd have much better moved now than I've eaten since.
You're likely to want, gotta get her.
It doesn't directly say librarian. Anthropology, history, folklore, architectural history, conservation or curation, architecture, historical architecture, landscape architecture, historic preservation, historic preservation planning, or general or building construction. What did he select, what did he select?
Is this Swindle, is this who we're looking at?
Yeah.
He has one application.
And he's presently a librarian?
Yes.
The only one. Pardon?
For Baylor Scott and White.
Oh, okay. The Baylor Scott and White, where's that? Where's the library for Baylor Scott and White?
I have no idea, that's his current occupation.
Unlike other duties as assigned, is working the bar, oh, archives, archives. Medical Library Association is working in the archives there, Alan.
Is that close enough to a historian?
Probably so. And he is also currently on the historic preservation committee, it looks like, which is being absorbed by this board.
Oh.
The duties of that committee, y'all have now assigned to this board.
That makes sense. Yeah, put him on there.
So we have one. Yes, I have Kay, Kido, Beth Mackey, Alice Hartley, Meg Petruca, Michael Gonzalez, Fadyan Goman, Guy Fowler, Brooke Fowler, Jer- uh, Jeremy Cameron, and Jeff Swindle.
Guy and Brooke would, would be, um, nepotism. Which we were talking about earlier.
Yes, and what, and you, you said in your policy is this. As part of the application process, an applicant for a board or commission appointment must disclose if they are related to a current employee, elected official, or board or commission member of the city of Temple. Relationships in the first, second, or third degree by consanguinity, which is blood, or in the first or second degree by affinity, marriage must be disclosed. In order to minimize the potential for actual or perceived conflicts of interest, the city council will take into consideration relationship information when they award a commission appointment. So you didn't say that you couldn't do it, it just says you're going to, um, request that information through the application process and take it under consideration.
And it didn't include stepchildren.
Um, that's gonna be a question all the time, Kathy.
Stepchildren are under consanguinity, no, affinity, marriage.
If it's a X step, a divorced or widow, not divorced. Widow, widow.
Widow.
So Lester is Michelle DeGatano's former deceased husband's son.
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure legally when, if, if that would distinguish it or not, but again, it's not an absolute requirement. You can just take it as a device.
Let me also add Anna Morris. It's not this one. Looking forward to it.
That's way too many people that are my neighbors. Locking on my door all the time.
More angry if you didn't choose them.
Yeah, true.
Okay.
Okay, very good, airport.
Did you want to add Heather, uh, Brooke to Main Street? That's the only under one she applied for, if you don't want. Oh, yeah, let's do that and then one on one and one on the other. Well, or they can see, two of those have to live within the city. You have a choose and either live within the city or the county, but one of them has to be representing corporate aviation, which I do think we currently have, um, an opportunity for.
Are we doing a library?
Airport.
Airport. We don't have an opportunity for.
Uh, you have no current applicants for someone who represents corporate aviation. Sorry, I didn't say that very well.
No, that's okay.
And then, uh, on this board, you do have, um, Steve serving.
He represents reinvestment.
Yes, and he's on three boards.
He has to step down for one. Is that what we're saying?
And I, I he represents T I S D on the reinvestment zone, so I, I, I wouldn't think he would want to, I haven't talked to him, but I wouldn't think he would want to step out of that position. And he's the chair of EDC, so.
Definitely didn't want to step.
But he's the chair of the airport too. I think he, he took that position because they, um, were looking for strength in leadership at the time. We couldn't get anybody. So he doesn't really have anybody's express, he doesn't really have a dog in the hunt for aviation. He was just trying to provide.
Help.
Yeah, just an opportunity.
And I, and you're, he said the exact same thing to me, I agree with you completely. But he might, for instance, be willing to have T I S D appoint somebody else. And maybe T I S D would want to appoint Dan to stand his word's time now.
I would be very shocked.
That he got, he would want, not want to do that.
Like when you get one of those other taxing entities seats on the reinvestment zone, it's like being quitted to the Supreme Court. You're a lifer and you don't want to get it up.
Yes.
I would be, I would be surprised, but I mean, that's not.
No, you're educating me, I, I wouldn't have looked at it that way. I'm sure you're right.
That would be the two someone then from the RZ. Um, yeah, and I don't know if you want to handle that the way, uh, we talked about with the, um, was it Main Street, to ask the chair to nominate someone? Um.
We should do them the same. If we're gonna, you know, ask, if we're gonna have one, a chair asking.
Okay, so y'all will, um, well, we have the RZ chair to ask the. So what am I asking the RZ about?
He, he serves on three boards.
Oh, okay, I would. EDC, airport, RZ.
We're assuming that, that airport would be, thinking it'd be the most agreeable to give it up.
Now, the, um, his term on the airport advisory board doesn't end until next September. So you could, um, you could let him continue serving and just with, uh, kind of like ginger. And then when, when that's up next September, just he can be appointed.
Are you sure?
Leave him on there.
Doesn't say that, Graham. Are you looking the right line?
Yes. He, his appointment is for, to the airport, is in September of twenty twenty two.
So you're saying
Here.
that, that he could stay on three until, until his term right now.
That's, that's the.
Thank you.
Robert Allen.
Sean. No, 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 no. With that. Well, what can we do to try to get somebody with, with aviation knowledge? More aviation.
Is there any application?
No, no, I understand that, but how would you apply?
Well, are you talking about the corporate aviation?
Yeah.
I think what they're talking about there is one of the corporate jet owners.
Right.
Or pilots.
Right, or somebody who works maybe not for them.
He's like eighty-nine now. Who's that? Is that Robert Allen?
You're on.
What do you want to say?
You got to me, I'm sorry.
What? No. I want to laugh too.
I can't, I'm sorry, I never said it. I said it. I take it back.
I want to hear it.
Okay. All right. So. Let's, uh, Marty, Carrie, Tyler. For sure, I know Christie Andrews, her, I think one of her kids getting into aviation, which is probably why.
Well, she owns a, she owns a, a business. Oh, wait, yes, and they have a plane out there. She and her husband, her husband flies, I don't know where the sheep flies or not.
I don't, I think, and one of their kids is also.
Oh, okay.
They're twins. They're not old enough to fly yet, are they? I'm not sure.
I think, cause they're like, Jerry's kids age, a little.
I think so too. We hope they're, we hope they're not flying things for right at the age.
So there's only one vacant county position that's not tied to corporate or the reinvestment zone. So you're already interviewing Marty and Carrie. So just keep that in mind, that only one of the two of them could serve. And Christie is also outside of the city. So then you would have three people for one slot.
Okay.
And we, and y'all can certainly do that, I just wanted to point that out. So then, um, what about Tanya, she's in the, she's not in the meeting.
No, she's in, so wait up. No, sorry. That's, that's not, that's incorrect. You're assuming that Steve will keep that position or not?
Uh, we're thinking that he'll probably keep that position till he turns out.
Not terms out, but just his terms.
Terms, oh, yeah.
I mean, that, that would not be consistently what you'd do for others if you let him turn out.
Right. I understand, yeah, he's. I know that Tony has a plane out there. Either does, or he's.
Tony Hale?
Yes, ma'am.
So what we're saying is we don't have any slot for Tyler, or are we saying that we do? We do.
You have a few options, you've got, uh, Phil Davis is not wanting to be reappointed, so there's a city slot. And then, um, you also have the, um, you've got another, um, general city position.
Right.
And you have one general position that could be from someone in the city or the, or, excuse me, or the county. So he could fill any of the three of those. And we need to figure out something.
Well, let's say that Marty and Carrie both want to stay on. They're, they're saying they're willing, but they're both county. So theoretically, that fills those two counties, two spots that are city and county.
Well, you act, you, you can only appoint either Marty or Carrie.
Why?
Because the other one's corporate aviation.
Oh, I didn't look at that, I'm sorry. Looking at the right of line.
So you've got Marty, Perry, and Christie that would all be, that have applied for the one spot. That's not corporate aviation.
And Tanya, actually.
Did you say Perry?
Marty, Perry, Tanya, and Christie would, um, and, and Jimmy for Bill Ski. Those all are the, are county positions. And not, none of them are corporate aviation, so they would all have to fill in that one slot. So so far, I, I don't have Christie down for an interview, did you, did you all want me to add? So so far, I, I don't have Christie down for an interview. Did you, did you all want me to add her?
Well, the only way to add her, or the only thing we can do with her is get rid of either Marty or Perry.
Well, interview her.
Well, I understand, but in reality, we can then only do something with, get, get one of those two to use her or.
See, what else than them are currently onboard. So it doesn't, it would make more sense to appoint one of them that are familiar and want to serve.
Yes, and is willing.
Makes sense. So no Christie.
Okay. So we, we do have some city spots open, and so far I only have Tyler Germstad down. And you've got at least, uh, you've got one other city spot. Do you have anyone else you want to interview?
Well, Robert Allison is, is his first choice, so.
Want to interview him?
We should interview, oh, yeah, we should certainly employ him. Because they're the only two that represent city, and that's their first choice.
And Tony, either has a plane out there, or we talked about the T-hanger Rebel process. I think he's got a plane in one of the T-hangers.
You not looking into?
Yeah, I think Tom Brodigan is also a pilot.
So are you asking them to be, for them to be interviewed, or are you just providing?
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
No, no, I, I would. I think that, um, what all did Tony, what, what all did Tony apply for? And, and how many, I've only applied for six. How many interviews is it?
You've, um, requested him to be invited for an interview for developing standards commission.
What did you ask Steve?
That page.
It is.
He said something about being on the at the top of the there.
Banker, corporate aviation.
Involved in standards committee, commission.
Corporate or business aviation? He might feel that way. I don't know.
Involved in general. Yeah, at least.
What level, whenever he says corporate or business aviation? Could that fit? That slot?
I don't think it's what y'all intended. We're wanting someone who was representing a corporate jet.
That's true.
I mean, I think, you know, him answering the question, yes, probably
You didn't.
Business, you know, he, he looks like he's a flight instructor, so he probably is a business aviation, but I don't think that's what y'all were looking for.
Yeah, hangar tenant.
I think that's it, Mayor. I think you guys have slated him for an interview for the Development Standards Advisory Board and those standards at this time, so. Don't see him on any of them. Really not in Parks and Rec yet. You guys didn't ask him for PNV. Okay, anyone else? So for your, you've got Tyler Germstad and Tony Hale for your city positions, and you've got two of them. Do you want to interview anybody else as a potential candidate? You said Tom Brodigan?
Yeah, just because I think he may be a pilot.
And then Robert Allison, his first choice. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I did put him down. Robert Allison. Apologize.
Pilot.
So you have three interviews for two positions.
He's a pilot, yeah.
Would you like to interview him?
What's the name of the pilot that lives on Seventh Street in his old house?
Who? Who's all that?
His wife is a doctor, Scott White, and he does I don't know if he owns a plane or if he has access to a plane and. No?
Is that a pilot?
I don't, I didn't know if his name was on here, and I just didn't recognize him. Yeah, I'm good.
There's a young man, um, who I've invited to participate on a few different committees. His name is, I think, I know his last name is Williams. I think his first name is Shadrick. He, I believe he's a pilot, and he also is a, he works for, I think, Wilson R in their aviation. So obviously, he didn't apply, but if y'all, that, that name comes to mind as somebody, and he's a, he's, he's, um, probably in his 30s, so he's one to reach out to if you are looking for a I think the corporate aviation, as we talked about when we were doing our policy, is hard because there's just so limited number of them, and you're probably not going to get the
Yeah.
plane owners to serve, and maybe not even the pilots, just because of their schedule. So, you know, maybe there's someone who's.
We have his contact info?
We do. I can certainly provide that to you if you're interested.
You know, Raymond, well, it wouldn't matter. Sneth is on the RZ. If he would be appointed to this, then that would be a slot for him to fill, but then we still have an RZ.
Well, if that, would that give him, would they give Raymond two boards? Of course, right now, I go, they're talking about building. So maybe best that he not be on. Okay, Jeff, you, somebody will get me that Mr. Williams. Wait, so we knew all, should we do it differently? Should we contact Jan Oren? Should we contact Grayton and Cefco and Wilson R and just ask them to ask them who they would suggest?
Do y'all do any outreach? Or any?
Love, love for that. Tommy, what's his face? Tommy Frankenberger? You may know the CEO at Wilson R. Maybe we just reach out to the people that have a jet out there.
I wish that Wendell was here, because he and I had this conversation in December, and he was going to do that, and he may have done that.
Yo, Brian. It's a CEO of Wilson R.
Okay. Do you have his mail address?
I'm calling. I just sent you Shadrick's.
Okay. Shadrick's with that. So who else do we need to reach out to? The Plane Technology, the Plane Southwest, Wilson R, Cefco. Probably none.
Wouldn't you say we cancel, right?
We, Tim, no, Tim Davis, sorry.
Okay, so for the city.
Be, isn't it?
I think so.
That's, uh, Davis.
Yeah. DV, DV. So for the two slots you have for city, you've got three applicants, or four, four people you're interviewing for that, so that's probably good. And then you've got two for the one county position, and they're going to work on corporate, right? Okay? Let me point something out on this one. So I had originally suggested that we add a temporary place, because I thought we, we're actually going, um, we, we decreased the number of positions on this board from nine to seven, and I originally thought that we had eight people who were eligible and wanting to serve, so I didn't want to kick anybody off midstream. But you, once Janet actually reached out, there's three people who actually don't want to continue serving, um, four people, actually. And so that eight spot that says temporary, I don't recommend anymore that you use that. So, um, I would just fill the, um, the position that's being vacated by Stacy, the one that's being vacated by Alicia, and the one that's being vacated by Brenda. And then assuming you desire, you can reappoint, um, the other four that actually Matthew Davis isn't up for reappointment yet, but the three, three of them are up for reappointment. So there are three folks that have, have their first, we should look at all of them, and only one application, so. Is that okay with y'all?
Yes.
The three that only put in one application.
Then it's their first choice. Candy Greco, I, um, really worked on, and she's a retired librarian. She would be great. I was very surprised to see Ed McCaffrey's name here.
Yeah, me too.
And it would be wonderful to get a mature, aggressive man involved. Library needs a lot of oomph.
Yeah.
The library board needs a lot of oomph. It's got, it has not had oomph.
Y'all know James Stafford.
Sorry. Ed is, Ed is very, Ed McCaffrey's very aggressive and maybe too aggressive, I don't know. But it's, it's not his first advocate, first choice, but I certainly think he's
He's still on airport.
Yes, so, yeah, he's still on airport and was willing to serve. Yeah, I think we got to interview him. But I hate not to take people who it's their first choice.
So how many openers do we have here?
Um, you have three. And then three, you have a total of six, but, um, three of them, you have people who are eligible for reappointment and desire to be reappointed. So three that are vacant. Yeah, I have four people though. Did you want to add James?
You want Jessica? Sure. Well, Jessica was, I don't know.
I know, I don't know him. I was just asking.
Oh, I don't know him well enough to know whether that's good, bad, or indifferent.
James is the PIO for Bell County, the new PIO for Bell County. He previously worked for, I think in marketing in, for UMHB, and, but prior to that, he worked for Parks and Rec. He was a city employee, and I think he's on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board right now, but he's turning out.
Well, I don't know him at all. I was thinking of somebody else. Well, let's go out and interview him then.
Yeah. The image that comes up for me when, um, you say James Stafford is the, or the, um, an award application we were doing for the park system, I just remember he filmed this video where he was doing cartwheels down the hall, so he's enthusiastic. I just picture cartwheel. Cartwheeler.
This board really needs enthusiasm. I'm hoping to do, you know, there are, there are a lot of changes that are going to happen at the library.
Natalie starts on Monday.
Right, and it's going to bring a lot of changes. But we, the board needs enthusiasm. It's been a, basically a do-nothing board, fully.
Okay. Do some cartwheels.
Pardon?
Maybe I'll do some cartwheels.
Yeah, we, the fire wheels would be good.
Reimbat. And again, assuming you want to appoint, reappoint the people who are eligible, you have one day.
What do you brand name here?
We are trying to, we're still looking for confirmation.
Yeah, so we're looking for confirmation from Harry and John.
Yes, and Harry, Harry, we, he doesn't need to be reappointed until September, so we have a little bit of time. And John has a personal situation right now, so we, we just, I would just recommend holding out, holding, waiting on him.
I don't see where he worked.
Uh.
So we really only have one required to.
He worked at Enos.
This is fun.
Okay.
Um, no, he. So just about Lester, and Lester would be very, very good for this board.
People we already have down for interviews based on Wendell's request are Mike Pilkington, Brian Reinhardt, Charlie Ayers, and Lester Fettig.
Oh, good.
So we need to.
Let's get at his, let's move on.
So we were just looking at Brent Coates, his, with Enos, and, um, but Janet just said he's running for school board.
Melton.
For which school?
Melton. And he's in the Melton School District.
Oh, yes, of course.
But I, I like Charlie, Lester, and Mike, Brian, I think.
Well, he's running for the Melton School Board. He's not going to work for this.
That's, that's a, yeah.
I think we put him on a different board, too.
I don't think he's disqualified from being, I mean, you, you have a city board member.
No, I mean, I'm making a joke. I'm not doing that.
Matthew Harvey, is that Bo Harvey?
That's a good question, probably.
Yeah, it just brings in. Harvey.
Yeah.
Yep, it is.
She didn't have first choice.
Matthew's actually Bo Hart.
I think he would do well on that board as well.
You put his name on?
Mike, Phil, you contacted me back. You said that he will stay on the Parks Board.
Mike did?
Yes.
What did he say about RZ?
Um, RZ and TEDC are co-number ones for it.
Okay, so somewhere on here, he said something about it was first choice, and it wasn't.
Yeah, it was, um, the Lincoln Center?
VDA.
VDA. So we need that's what I remembered, and that's what Wendell remembered, too.
Yeah, first choice.
VDA?
Well, let's leave it on there and interview these folks.
Not interview him for RZ?
Yeah, for those, yeah, I agree. He can be plugged in one or the other.
Anybody else? Nigel, um, so Mike, Pilkington, Brian Reinhardt, Charlie Ayers, Lester Fettig, and Bo Hart. All right? Anybody else? Okay, Parks and Rec. So here, um, you've got uh, three people who want to be reappointed and are eligible to be reappointed. Um, you have three vacancies that you'll need to fill. Then you'll need to make a decision about Lacy Adams. She uh, was appointed. She's a resident of Melton, and this board has always had a residency requirement for city, so she, she wasn't eligible when she was appointed, but she was appointed, obviously, and she's been going to meetings and um, attending and participating, so her term doesn't expire until next year. So you could choose to leave her on until next year, um, as you've done with a few others. And so and then if the, I think that's it. So you've got three vacancies that need to be filled by, with no incumbent, and you've got three incumbents. And Lacy's really not a rep, she, she doesn't live in District One, so you could put her in any slot you wanted to.
This board in my limited impression, I'm having been to some meetings now, needs, it would be, be good to have some minority representation.
Agreed. So you're saying that Lacy is not District One?
Right, right.
So.
You don't need a District One in there.
Well, she, you, if you want someone from District One, she's not really taking up the District One slot, if that makes sense, because she lives in Melton. So you, you, you have potential, uh, you, you can appoint someone from District One, Two, and Three, or you can appoint two people from District Two and one person from District One, or you can appoint two people from District Two and one person from District Three. Those are your options, so make it kind of complicated. Um, the easiest thing would be picking someone from One, Two, and Three. But you don't have to do that.
So I'd like to interview Cameron. Beyonce. I would like to put Bill Leake. He does feel that way, doesn't mean I'm not being real. I would like to put Bill Leake as an applicant, as an interviewer.
I got Brian in front of me, too.
Heather Smith. She, um, we looked her up earlier, she's an insurance broker, I think is what it said.
Heather Smith?
Who?
Um, Kruger, Kathy Kruger.
You know what? How many people are on the?
I don't, I think it's just Brian.
Steve Jackson.
He's a minister, children's minister.
In District Three, Susan.
Heather Smith? The one you're pulling up?
Children's Minister.
Particularly this is in East Temple because they're looking at East Temple parks.
Anyone know, um, Relation?
Can we look up that one, too?
It's Hodges.
She's on the T E F.
Yeah, yeah, that name is, it might be through T E F that that name's.
How could you scroll down to the? She's not eligible, she lives in the county.
Oh, okay.
Very involved.
Here's James Stafford again.
She's, she's on your T E F board with you.
Went to school together, I suppose.
I think we ought to interview her. She seems very involved.
That's her one of one.
I'm, I'm afraid I'm not going to say her name, uh, Relation, what kind of?
Things for Relation.
The only.
Relation.
The only thing about District Four is that with you've got Joey, Mike, and Scott Keela already on the board, serving from District Four, and you only have two District Four spots. So you don't really have another, you don't have a District Four vacancy.
And didn't Wendell leave some District Four names?
I, I think so, so that, and, and, so you, you may want to wait until the, some more District Four slots come up.
Sounds reasonable.
You know, one thing, especially in something like Ms. Hodges, I would hate for her not to get an interview and never know why she got the, why she didn't get an interview. Is there a plan to respond back to those that didn't get an interview? And maybe, maybe with a brief explanation, something like, you know, your district four, those were already filled, thank you for applying. Please apply again, not that we just ignored you, it doesn't make sense to get back with.
There, there is a, um, I think you would have to say they, there is an opportunity to appoint her, but you would have to replace Joey, who's, his term is up, so you we would just have to say it in a way that there was an incumbent in the spot
Yeah.
that council decided to keep, you know, versus.
Yeah, I mean, how, we worked that very fast, I just, you know, we ask these people, apply, 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 and then we ignore them. Yeah, that's not, that's not fair.
But you, you all would have to, that is also going to be very difficult, because you all would have to tell us for every person, what you wanted to tell, what you wanted us to tell them. Because, because not all of them did the, there was an incumbent, so I I don't know that you want to get down that rabbit hole.
Okay, so that's fine, and I totally get that.
It's saying that the position has been real.
We can definitely do that, but in terms of like giving a reason, that can be difficult.
So we're going to, we're in the process right now of entering all of these applications into Prongo. And there's actually like a generic template where we can send them an email. Even whether it's a notification that there's a vacancy, or your, your application is expiring, you know, something, so we can probably just create a generic, you know, thank you for applying, you know, more stuff. It's kind of a capational balance to hear just.
Definitely would want, they're not, something that, where they would not want to serve.
So we're at Animal Services, yeah?
Well, let's go, let's keep on parts for a second, because I think, I'm checking if how many people you asked for that are in District Four. Number one or?
I just have four.
Okay, so we've got, so who you have left is Cameron Fenty, is that how you say it?
Yes.
Vince, Vince. Beyonce Davis, Bill Leake, Steve Jackson, and Heather Smith. So you're doing five interviews. Bill Leake, if I have him. Yeah, so there's five interviews for three open positions. Let me make sure what district these guys are in. Beyonce's one, Heather's one. Bill Leake is three, and Steve Jackson. Okay, so you have nobody from District Two, and you've got at least one vacancy has to come from District Two.
I'll tell you that Catherine Koloski has called me several times after inquiring. We have.
Catherine, did you say?
Catherine Koloski is in District Two.
Can you pull her up?
Right, it's good.
How come she's, she's not District Two?
She's south of me.
They put on there what District Eleven?
She just made me. This is District One, but that's true.
Did you want to put her on there?
Yeah, let's go ahead.
It says she actually lives in District One, without her, she put District Two, yeah, but that's yeah.
Shall we add the other Kathy Kruger?
Ready to move on to the next?
We did get Ellen Mylett on something here, we
We don't have enough program.
Yes.
While we were trying to, like, add anyone, we're trying to do.
Yeah, just, I.
Have you not worked with her yet?
So you still only have one person that you're interviewing from District Two, and you have at least one slot for District Two. Is there anyone else you want to consider? You don't have.
Who are we interviewing for District Two?
Kathy Kruger.
What about Brian? Are we on Park still?
Yes.
That's about it, very fast.
Right.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
So that might be a place, Judy, where you need to do some recruitment, because it doesn't seem.
Yeah, Judy Callaway.
I know, you're going to hit me with it now.
Perfectly, okay. Right.
I'm getting punchy here.
I'm reminded if you're.
Animal Services.
I forgot.
This is a fun one, um, because you have to have a municipal official, and that means one of you.
Just as a reminder, I was not a municipal.
You are the council liaison, but this is actually a board member.
A municipal services board member.
Where you vote and, and, and it's required by.
Stephanie?
Now, this is required by state law.
I know, but has Stephanie been doing this?
Stephanie is the, is representing, she's actually office there, so she's doing it, but.
What we're saying is you're getting promoted from liaison to board member.
Congratulations.
You're up.
Let's see, what is the dollar sign connected to that?
We're doubling your council cell.
Okay.
All right, and then you.
You're right, Jessica, you were drafted.
And then you've got one vacancy. You do, after council points to you.
Okay, so I think Carol Owen would be a very vocal.
Doesn't she live in slum, dry area, North Nice? North Carolina. We need some, this, this is another.
She's got a lot of energy. Yeah.
Are we still on board for changes at the, at the animal shelter?
Yes.
We need involvement rather than just kind of blank stares.
So really, you have one. You really just have one vacancy because of, of the, um, Eric has never attended a meeting, so they, that, he has forfeited his position. You, and then the other two members are standing members, which is well, you, uh, you don't have to have it be Dr. Cruz, but you do have to have it, it does have to be a veterinarian, and he has a longstanding appointment, and if you don't do that, then I'm on vacation for a little bit.
And I'm not. I'm not the board voter at all.
And then you also need to have an animal shelter operator, that's also required by state law, and so
Miss Amy.
That has been Amy, and, and, you know, she is the animal shelter manager, so that's a very logical position.
That Amy's good.
Is also standing. So, um, so we've got Carol Owen as an applicant, or as an interviewer, interviewee. Do you want to interview anybody else for the vacant city position?
But we can only fill one slot, right?
You only, you would, yes, you really just have one slot other than yours.
And you know Carol?
I do. She will be good.
Good.
Do you need to throw anybody else in there? Otherwise, we're doing what we've always done, disappointing somebody else.
This is a tricky board.
The other one's like Anna and Jordan and Daniel.
Who's Anna?
Uh, Carla Connelly's daughter, Anna, that just went to town. They're on the list three or four.
We're going to have some openings in the, um, in September. Two of, oh, yeah, see, there are two possible openings in the September period, and we're getting, this is, this is another tricky. Well, this is a tricky board because Dr. Cruz is wonderful and difficult at the same time. Carol will be up to that.
So just in six months, you'll have one more appointment to make, um, because Amy is terming out in her term, well, in September.
Amy?
Uh, Hoover.
Oh, okay, I was going to say, yeah, all right.
Amy Strunk is a standing position because of the, what the state law says, yeah.
And she's, as of right now, she's going to leave the, you know, minutes, or not minute, organization that comes to each meeting.
Right? So just, uh, is Emily? And then the last one is civil service, which I, I have the duty to appoint someone and bring them to you for confirmation. appoint someone and bring them to you for confirmation, so I still thought you might want the opportunity to interview the person that I appoint before you confirm them, but you guys don't have to go through the list today. I'm going to do that and bring you in, Nate.
So, let's talk a little bit about that board, just, I know that it's a small board, it's an important board, and it sort of had some skill requirements.
Skill?
Well, I'm, I'm, that's more of a question than.
It should have some skill requirements.
Tell us a little bit about that board.
You have to be a citizen of Temple for three years or more. I think there's a prohibition about how you can't have been an elected official within a certain amount of time, if my memory serves. You have to be over the age twenty-five, and be of good moral character, and be a citizen of the United States. Those are the requirements.
What about to do?
The Civil Service Commission is a quasi judicial body. They approve the eligibility and testing parameters for firefighters and police officers. They approve the civil service rules and regulations, and they hear appeals related to promotional actions, and disciplinary actions unless the officer or firefighter takes the, their right under state law to appeal to a hearing examiner, a third-party hearing examiner. I mean, confer agreements, we do have some restrictions on that, but for the most part, they don't hear disciplinary actions because police and firefighters always take it to a third-party hearing examiner. And so that's really what they do. I don't remember the last time that the Civil Service Commission heard a disciplinary appeal. Actually, I don't think I've ever been involved in one in my career, because they just go to hearing examiners.
And so you will only appoint, but we appoint someone.
You just confer. I appoint, you confer.
Got you. Okay.
Can you tell us how we're going to do, what you're going to do?
So my recommendation for the youth advisory board, on a normal basis, that's one of the boards that is supposed to be appointed in September. So I, I would recommend that we don't appoint right now, that we defer to September, and give us a chance to really work on a direct marketing plan, which we haven't done yet, that's why you see so few applicants with students, and I think September just is a more natural time with the school year and things like that. So my recommendation to you is to not, you've established the board, but for us to not make the initial appointments until September.
Yes. Matthew, I think, start that. Looking for the information. Put a board.
Okay, well.
Want to make sure that what is missed. Yes, no, I guess, um, his name's on the list, and I missed him.
Yeah, anything else?
How the schedule, how we set.
The, the interview date is on the column here. Everybody, take some time and check your calendar, there's number three out of the five of us can be there. Clear with the fan?
Of course, just to make sure, just go back there and make sure.
Doesn't that be pretty? And I, I think you want it prettier than this. Can I, can we go ahead and contact the people that we do have, just to get it started, and then if you need to fill any higher levels? Can you all look down this list of the interview days and times and see if those would work, or if we need to make any changes? Because we intend to do contact, you know, pretty soon, because these dates are coming right up.
And where, where is, where are we? Where do we, where is it?
I would suggest you do them here or virtually. Yeah, and, and I don't think we can accomplish, I, I, I think we have a new date that we're asking you to save for that, for our retreat, and using that time to do this.
Get a position to here. You have more parole over it, if you ask them to come here, and you can't tell them they can't come into an opening? But you can ask them, and they would be willing to wait in another room, and then if they choose not to do that, that's information that you can use. If you do it virtually, the first person is the only one that's likely to know.
That's true.
Kathy, even if they do them virtually, I was thinking that we could ask, and I sent you some grappling, which you probably haven't had a chance to look at, but basically saying, it's an open meeting, and you can come in if you want to, but we, I don't even think I said we ask you, but if you're waiting in the waiting room, there's a virtual waiting room, too, that we can bring them in, so make sure they know they can come in, but really, whether it's a physical or virtual wa- waiting room, that option. Because if I were being interviewed, even if I had the opportunity to be in here, I wouldn't want to, until the person, so you were ready for me, you know?
And that's true, I'd forgotten about the waiting room on Zoom, so you can't tell who's in the room and who's waiting and stuff.
And how long, for, for our sake, if we're looking like Wednesday, November ten, or March tenth, at one P.M., we block out the whole afternoon, or what?
Okay, I was thinking you would do either the morning or the afternoon, so I've alternated it, but that you would set aside the full, the full morning or the full afternoon. And, and I didn't have the benefit of knowing who you wanted to interview, so I'll also work on that to make sure we don't have too many people, not enough time. Now that I have the list, we might shift this around a little bit before we make it final, but generally, do these days and times work for you all? Is there anything, spring break, this is part, this is spring break month, does that impact anybody? And are you guys okay coming here to do it physically, but letting someone participate via Zoom, if that's how they feel comfortable? So you all would be here, but they could be on Zoom? Or here personally?
Yeah. Person's always better. So, um.
This might be tough for people.
And do we, we're, we're just all come, or we're going to touch base and say, if we can't all be here at one time, we're just planning to all be here at these points?
Um, I think we, we will not be able to conduct an interview if we don't have a forum.
So we're planning to all be.
So we need to make sure that at least a forum will be available for all of the sessions.
So far, those days work, all worked for me. Something big may come up.
The only thing for me is March seventeenth, which is at nine A.M., I have to be out of here by noon. Just because I have another round of everybody. God willing, they won't let another lose.
I might, I'm probably going to move some of these boards around, that, that ones that you have heavier, I'm going to, I'm going to play with this, if you'll just, I'll try to make that a lighter morning, to make sure you're, you are out by noon, because right now, that's one of the heavier interview schedules, so I'll move that somewhere.
Oh, okay. How long do y'all, in your mind, allocate for each aspect of it?
Fifteen minutes.
Max?
That's what, that's what this is based on.
Do you know when we're doing more detail? We can get that posted, otherwise, she'll have to go over the weekend.
Yes, I can work on that this afternoon.
What else?
So questions for the interviews.
Do you want to have the questions lined up?
Yeah, let's talk about that really quickly. So, one suggested question that I have is, just kind of a general question, ask them, why are you interested in, and why do you think you are a good fit for this board or commission? What would you like to accomplish as a board or commission member? And do you have any questions for us?
Didn't they say why they were interested in the application? Isn't that on?
Not to that specific board, just. Generic.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know what they're going to bring to the, to the, for me. The strengths, talents, or skills that they have.
So, do you feel like, why do you think you're a good fit with that, or you want to ask something more specific, like what, what, what strengths, talents, and skills do you bring?
There's more specific, kind of consider again on what, what their purpose will be. Other than how like people, I don't like to be involved, you know?
So why are you interested? What strengths, talents, and skills do you bring? And what would you like to accomplish? You all comfortable with those questions? Remember, you only have fifteen-ish minutes.
What, what would you like to accomplish is a little bit difficult, because they're not on the boards, they really don't know what they, and some of these boards, they don't, we're not asking them to accomplish anything other than to review the applications that come before the board, i.e. buildings and standards, things like that, so maybe it's not, maybe some other way to phrase that.
Okay.
Uh, animal services, what, what if somebody comes in, well, I want to make the pound, or the animal services, the, I want to be sure that we become a kill-free zone. Or whatever it's called.
No kill.
No, thank you, no, no shelter.
Well, I think that's informative to you, then, if that's not in line with your policy. The, the reason you may want to ask the question is because it gives you insight into what their goals are, what, you know, how they're thinking, and if that's not in alignment where, with what y'all have set as the goals, and it'll, it'll give you an idea that, that you might not be.
Yeah, you're right.
Understanding how, but I also can understand the point that you're making, in that some board, or some, some of them may not have, they just want to be involved, and they don't know.
Right, and people kind of embarrassed to say, I'm not trying to accomplish something, I just want to be a part of the city.
Right.
I want to give the, I want to clearly bring to the board.
What have you asked them when you first start off, what do you, you're here applying for the animal shelter, or animal services board, what do you know about the board? Just kind of ask them what they know in general about what that board does, and then how they feel like they could help or.
I think you want to ask some question that gives you insight into, are, do you have alignment with these people that you're appointing? Because that's been, that's been, that's one of the reasons that we have done all of this, is if you're, if you, if you have a smart growth goal in the community, and you are appointing to someone to P and Z who's a no-growth person, just as an example. They're not in alignment with what you, what you as the elected officials have set as a priority, so maybe that's not the way to say it, but what, how could you get an understanding, what could you ask that would get you an understanding of not just what they're bringing, but what do they, which is a good question, I'm not saying you shouldn't ask that, but what, what are their, what, how do, how do they, or do they not fit in with your path?
That's sort of like what I told you when we talked the other day, that I am in a failure of finding people to apply for different positions, because I know people, and I think that, I'm going to think, well, they're, you know, they happen to be a friend of mine, but they're really a difficult person, they don't want to own a board. So that's what, sort of what we want to figure it out, personality traits in a sense, team players, not, versus non-team players, in a way. For some of the boards and others, that's not so important.
I guess, you know, it's one of the purposes of boards and commissions, is to be sure that they align with our strategic vision, our strategic plan. So, you know, whatever you think about, I think of something, whatever you say, I think of someone that may be difficult. You know, if, if they're going to be a roadblock, or a NACER.
Right.
Well, that's part of the purpose of what we're doing. What else? I think Susan's ready.
Okay?
I think everyone's ready. So do you just want to stack together some questions that you often just choose from when you get in here? Because this is next week, we're talking about, we're not going to be together again before that season's up, and what, I, I know everybody's tired, so just want us to just lift together for y'all?
I assume we could just kind of ask them, if, once they're talking, if they have any examples, their experience.
You're, I think you're free to ask. I, I would encourage you to be consistent in your questions, but always feel free to ask follow-up questions for more information.
Okay. Thank you all very much, it is two forty-five, and this meeting is adjourned.